All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:37 PM. We will start with our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Watson, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. Raise the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there is one item to report out of closed session. Ratification of grievance settlement with CSEA, Chapter 112, Claim Number 24258. The claim was approved with a motion of five to zero in an amount not to exceed $150. Moving on to approval of the agenda for March 4th, 2025. Can I please have a motion in a second?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the governing board for February 18th, 2025. Can I please have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our hearing session. And we have two recognitions tonight. The first one is our artistic achievement award. And I think a lot of these wonderful students that I see in front of us are being recognized today. So I'm looking forward to hearing about them. Mr. Clement?
All right, thank you. Okay, so if you have an award tonight and you're going to get the artistic achievement award, if you could bring your award and come stand up here with us. We're going to make this half circle line. And you can hold your award facing out. And as we call your name, you can maybe step forward, maybe give a little wave and let us know. Give all of these artists a big round of applause. And everyone just stay right up here. And I'm going to turn it over to the board so they can say a few comments. So if you just stay right where you are for a few more minutes.
Board members, any comments?
Absolutely. Well, congratulations, of course, for your achievement. We do appreciate your hard work. And Mr. Clement, while I understand you're still getting there, that's what it takes is time, effort, practice. And I know this because both of my children are now adults and both of them are phenomenal artists because they put thousands and thousands and thousands of hours of practice into it. And actually, my oldest followed a career in the arts. Don't worry, parents, she does very well. So keep at it. Good job.
Good chunky.
Congratulations to all of our award winners. I am always in awe of those with amazing artistic and creative talent. Keep up the great work. And we look forward to seeing some of your artwork at the next visit to the sites. We love seeing him in the classroom. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
Congratulations to all of you. And I just want to kind of echo what Mr. Watson said. Clearly, you all have talent, but also you have put in the effort to push that talent enough to be recognized for it. So thank you for your addition to the world. Art really does make the world a better place, in my opinion. So congratulations.
Ms. Grace?
I echo everything that my colleagues have said. I love this award. I think being artistic allows you to view things from a different perspective and just have different ways of, again, looking at things from math to English to science. So applaud you guys. It's amazing. And Rio Norte has a great art program, great art elective. So congratulations.
And I'll just end it with congratulations, guys. I think it's so impressive when people can express themselves through their art. Me personally, I'm not the greatest artist, so I really appreciate when people are creative and can express their feelings or their thoughts through their artwork and through the pieces that they do. So congratulations. Keep up the great work, guys, and keep inspiring your peers. And of course, now we're going to take pictures. And we have an opportunity for our parents to take pictures. The board members will all hang back. Rick, can you take a picture? And then we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, why don't we take a five-minute recess so that our parents can get pictures? And then we'll start the meeting back up at 6:51. Back to order. Let's call this meeting back to order, everybody. If we can grab our seats. Thank you. I always feel like I'm really short. Okay. We are going to move on to our next award for the evening, and that is the You Made the Difference Award. I will turn it over to Dr. Hawkins.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we recognize all of our amazing members of the Saugus family. During the pandemic, we knew that kids were going to struggle because of being online and not being in school. I think we all came together during that time to make sure our kids got an education, that they were back in school as soon as they could be, even though we had to measure the distance apart and do all of those things. But nationally, it was believed and is true that there would be learning loss for students. Unbeknownst to us, of course, we just went through to do the work that we always do. And when I say that, I mean, everybody, not just the teachers in the classroom. It's every single person in the organization, whether you work at a school site or not. Because if you work for grounds and we have sprinklers that aren't being taken care of and they're making the field a mess, it impacts learning because the kids can't go play when they need to. So it is every member of this organization. We learned that the Education Recovery Scorecard was made. It was a study being done by Harvard, Stanford, and Dartmouth to just study the achievement levels of school districts, over 8,700 school districts across 43 states. And the reason it was across 43 states is because some of the states don't have state test scores that the study could use. So it's totally up to them, and they did that. What they were looking for was maintaining student achievement. What they found was that some schools districts had not only maintained, but they had increased the learning levels or student achievement of their students, meaning pre-pandemic. In addition, they looked at how many of those districts did so in both language arts and math. They identified 100 school districts out of that 8,700 that made the achievement of scoring higher on their state assessment in both language arts and mathematics. And they identified 11 in the state of California, and Saugus Union was one of those school districts. This wasn't something we applied for. This wasn't an application we wrote. This was somebody just studying our work and you guys all doing what you do best, what you do to make a difference for kids. Hard as it was during the pandemic and as hard as it's been after the pandemic, trusting and believing in the things that we've asked you to do and doing all of the amazing things that you do anyway. But always, always, always keeping our kids at the center, keeping their achievement at the center, and doing what is the right thing. As I said to you in the email that I sent when I announced this to everybody, we found it out accidentally. There wouldn't be an award or a trophy or a plaque because that's not what this recognition was about. But I felt like in a time when everyone expected education to fail, you guys showed that you make the difference. And so I talked with Mrs. Garibay, and we decided that providing each of you with an award to recognize that, that you really made a difference. You do every day, and I know you know that. I know we tell you that. But I think it's really, really important that sometimes you have that tangible document that helps you all remember that. And so Pam and the team made sure that every single member of the organization has an award. But that's like 1,400 employees. So we're not going to make you sit here while we call names. And we didn't have enough room for everybody. So those of you that came, thank you for being here. Those of you that are at home watching, thank you. But we're going to call you up by school, and the board is going to be able to go down for the picture. We're going to stay up here. Pam's going to hand you. We're going to call you up by three schools at a time, just for efficiency. Just to let the community know, we're not going to read all of the names and everything, but we have representing each school, the school administrators, our office managers, our custodians, and our lead teachers. We also have awards for the district office, and we're going to ask that Dr. Stevenson and Dr. Brunis come up and accept those for our employees. Then we'll distribute them out to all of those folks who don't have a school site base. So if you're a certificated person or a classified person, your award is in the bundles that we have. And we'll pass those out tomorrow. So with no further ado, if you want them to come now, and then you guys can talk. Or do you want them to...
No, let's do that.
Okay. All right, so the first three schools are Bridgeport, Cedar Creek, and Emblem. Yeah, we need to be standing up in the back for the picture. Congratulations, you guys. Big hugs to all of you. Big hugs. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please remember what a great job you all did and what a difference you made. I mean, there's only been five of us. I don't know. Okay. Hey. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, so can we have the team from Foster, Highlands, and Helmers? Oh. You're at Highlands. Yes. Look, you don't even have your hat on, and I remember. Thank you, everybody. Big hugs here, too, because I said hugs before. I have to do it every time. Thank you, everybody. All right, so next we have Mountain View, North Park, and Plum Canyon. Oh, here comes trouble. It's just I always see you guys together. And again, hugs, 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 everybody, air hugs. You guys. You and Tanaz and the other ones. So far. Thank you. All right, so we have Rio Vista, Rosedale, and Sky Blue. Again, big air hugs. I'll see you Friday. Yeah, just tell me what you want to do. And can you give me a sense of... No, I just want to... Okay, is Paula here?
No.
Oh, well, we'll figure it out. I'll figure it out. It's okay. Are you going to do all four of them? Or are you going to make it to Nas and I stand up? Okay, and the last group, Tesoro Devaya, West Creek, Bokeh Early Learning Academy, and the district office. I think you two came together. You know what? Brandon's here.
Yeah, Brandon could be us.
Yeah. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, Monica. We need to get somebody from Bokeh. I don't know. I left it all in charge of Pam.
Tell her to wait.
Wait, 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 Monica. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Air hugs, air hugs.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the board to say a few comments.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the board to say a few comments if they'd like. Mr. Watson?
Absolutely. So I don't think it's a hot take when I say that the main priority or the primary function of schools is to ensure the academic and social emotional preparation of our students for the future. Yes, given that we're entrusted daily with the custody and care of over 10,000 students, our top priority is safety and well-being, and most of you are well aware that we've got some things to work on in that area. But our very existence, schools' very existence, is to help prepare our students for the future. And we continue to see, this is an amazing one, but multiple indicators that our schools are not only doing their job, but we're far outpacing others locally, statewide, and nationally, it looks like. So I want to thank and congratulate district staff and leadership for the practices and policies that they put in place to help make this happen. But of course, it's our instructional staff that's out there implementing these strategies day in and day out that truly deserve the accolades. Seems like we talk every day about how hard the teaching profession is and the fact that it only seems to get harder. So again, from the bottom of our hearts, to each one of our staff and employees, thank you and congratulations to you all. And hey, what about the end users of our education, right? What about those who ultimately benefit from these outstanding results? Great job to our students. In class every day, you're doing what it takes to prepare yourselves for the future. Way to go.
Mr. Drunky?
Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you for all of the hard work, the dedication. And it is so apparent how important it is for us to continue and keeping the focus on student achievement. It's quite an accomplishment, what you guys have done, so I am very grateful and thank you.
I want to say what I always said to my kids when they did something good growing up. You all gave me bragging rights, so thank you. I always say that this is the best district, and you guys proved me right over and over and over. So thank you all for your hard work, everyone from top to bottom. And, you know, I just want to reiterate something Dr. Hawkins said, like, how important everyone is. Because I know, you know, when my son was in school, there was one janitor who just kind of took him under his wing and gave him a friend to talk to. And so it's really important to have everyone participating in the, you know, the care and education of our kids. And I realize that that new book I'm reading is the same author as the other one. But what, one of the things that he said was, we have to remember the goal of the goal, and obviously, our goal is to educate the children. But it's also to make them, you know, functioning, happy, productive members of society. And I think that you are all doing a fabulous job of that. Thank you.
Mrs. Greece?
Congratulations to everyone. I think, you know, Dr. Hawkins said something about, this is about keeping kids at the center. And I think that's really important for us to remember that it's, it's all about the kids. It's about every single kid. And it's not just about academics, but it's about the well-being. It's about the safety. It's about our teachers and our staff and everyone that helps attribute to winning awards like this. So I've learned a lot over the past two years, more than I thought I would ever know. And you guys are the backbone of the school, but we cannot do this without our kids. So thank you again. Thank you for everything that you guys are doing, things that people probably don't even realize that you all are doing. So thank you.
And I'll just close it off by saying congratulations. Thank you all for the hard work you do. Even amongst the challenges that COVID provided and all the challenges of coming out of COVID, you guys were able to do some really wonderful things and really help our district shine. Of course, we, you know, want to recognize our district leadership because, you know, they also have an impact in making sure that things are flowing in the right direction. Our students are amazing, but they wouldn't be able to achieve all those things with all of, without all of your support. And just really grateful for all of, everything that you guys do. And, you know, they always say it's what people say behind, when you're not there, right, that matters. And the fact that, like, we didn't know anything about this, and we found out that we were recognized for such a big honor, that says a lot. So thank you, guys, for everything that you do. Really appreciate it. And with that, I think we'll give just a quick five-minute recess in case anybody wants to jet before we start our hearing session. Sorry, I don't know, maybe we won't. We'll make it the quickest five minutes ever.
Looks like everybody's back and forth, so we'll go ahead and get started. We're going to move on to our hearing session. I'll read the hearing session section. Advanced written requests to address the board regarding agenda and non-agenda items, Board Bylaws 9320, 9322, and 9323. Each speak to the process used by the governing board to allow for public comment during its meetings. The bylaws are compliant, in compliance with the Brown Act and other applicable law. Board Bylaw 9323 specifically outlines the process for members of the public to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items that are within its subject matter jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to address the governing board are asked to do the following prior to the start of the public comment section of the meeting agenda to ensure that appropriate time is allotted to all interested speakers and topics. The speaker must either complete a speaker card for each item they desire to speak on and/or notify the assistant to the superintendent of each item if attending the meeting in person. This notification is requested to allow the board president to consistently implement public comment guidelines provided in Board Bylaw 9323. Members of the public wishing to make public comment via telephone or virtual meeting software must notify the assistant to the superintendent via email not later than 4:00 PM, 4:30 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting to ensure that the person has the same opportunity to address the board under Board Bylaw 9323 as those who are in attendance. Each speaker is allowed three minutes per topic for public comment. The total time allotted for each topic is 20 minutes. Depending on the number of persons wishing to be heard on a single topic, the governing board may adjust the time allotted for each speaker or the total time allocated to the topic issue. President of the board may take a poll of speakers for and against the topic issue to determine how best to allot time on each topic issue. Members of the public who wish to address the board do so either in person or via Zoom. A speaker may read a statement from an individual not in attendance. However, their allotted speaking time will not be extended to read such a statement. A timer visible to all attendees will be used to manage time during public comment. Any speaker who exceeds their allotted time will have their mic cut off. To ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to direct, to directly address the board, any member of the public who utilizes a translator shall be provided at least twice the allotted time to address the board, unless simultaneous translation equipment is used to allow the board to hear the translated public testimony simultaneously. Please remember that state law prevents the board from acting on any matter not listed on the agenda or from discussing any such matter in detail. Ooh, that's mouthful. All right, we are going to start with Amanda Howard. And then next up is Ingrid Boyston to discuss inclusion.
Good evening. Before I remembered that we were having the You Make the Difference Award, I actually wrote this, so it connects, but it wasn't unintentional. My name is Amanda Howard, and I'm a proud sixth-grade teacher at James Foster Elementary. As a boarding cabinet, I feel it is very important for you to hear about areas where the district needs to improve. However, I also think it's equally as important for you to hear about what is going well and how we are helping our students succeed. As previously mentioned in my email in December, only 41% of my students were proficient in reading, and only 30 of them were, 31% of them were on grade level in math. Both of these percentages are below grade level, excuse me, both of these percentages are below the state average and well below our district average. Because of this, I knew my class and grade level had a lot of catching up to do in order to ensure our students were ready for junior high. Thankfully, you, as a boarding cabinet, provided the necessary resources through our math toses, our literacy toses, and weekly grade level planning time. I am proud to say that my students have made remarkable progress since the beginning of the year. Our proficiency scores in math doubled from 31% to 62%, and our scores in reading almost doubled from 41% to 79%. In fact, 76% of my students improved in their overall domain placement in reading, and 72% improved in their placement in math, which is a huge accomplishment. I'm so proud of them. I firmly believe this happened due to the time that my sixth-grade team is given each week to plan, which has allowed us to really refine our instruction and provide targeted intervention, as well as the, as the support I've received from our math toses, literacy toses, and my administrator, Jamie Rutter. In closing, I want to say a big thank you to our math toses for providing support in the areas of building a thinking math classroom in mathematics, our literacy toses for providing training in morphology, my principal, Jamie Rutter, for giving me the support to try something new, even when I wasn't so sure it would actually work, and my sixth-grade team for working together to focus our instruction. But I also wanted to say thank you to you for ensuring that our students have what they need in order to be successful. So thank you.
Ms. Ingrid Boyston, and then we'll have Michelle Joseph.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ingrid Boyston, as you know. And there's one aspect of the big behavior issue which is so specific in nature that I felt like I really have to highlight it on its own. It's also one of the areas that we're kind of pushing to the end of areas that we want to look at later because it's so tricky, but I don't think we can afford to wait. I think we have to look at it now where we risk finding ourselves in the same situation next year, and I don't think anybody wants that. So please hear me. I am advocating for all of our kids with special needs, advocating for them and all of our general ed kids. Now, I understand that I, the nation is moving towards full inclusion, and that California feels that we are behind in this process. But I fear that it's because we are rushing to try to catch up that we're actually making the situation a little bit worse. So let me explain why I think that, and you can just look this up as well. This is from the June 19th, 2024 issue of California Special Education Law and Advocacy. Existing law provides that it is the intent of the legislature that appropriate qualified staff are employed consistent with credential requirements. Staff is plural. You cannot simply train a general ed teacher to simultaneously be a special ed teacher. And even if you could, one person does not have enough time or energy to do all the things for all the kids every day. It won't work. You will end up robbing Peter to pay Paul. So here's what it looks like. When one of the student's needs demand, like, the majority of the teacher's attention, all of these other kids over here, whose behaviors would have been attended to, they go unattended, and they potentially grow into more big behaviors, making the situation even worse. Another report online says services for these persons, kids with special needs, are needed in order to ensure the right to an appropriate educational opportunity to meet their unique needs. Putting a calming corner in each classroom and telling the teachers to let students with special needs wander or color when no one's available to assist them is not actually providing appropriate educational opportunity to meet their needs. And when those children's special needs result in all the behaviors that we've been talking about repeatedly, calling out, running around the classroom, or doing anything so that the others can't concentrate, we've now impinged on the rights of all the students. And worse, it is this environment that is consistently pushing our children with special needs to the point of frustration so that they act out, sometimes even harming themselves or others. This is not what full inclusion is supposed to look like. What is it supposed to look like? The classroom is supposed to be adapted before they get there to meet all of the kids' needs, and there should be collaboration between, in the form of co-teaching with a general and special ed teacher, which is apparently what is happening in our identified special inclusion, full inclusion classrooms. That's great. But what about all of our other classrooms? To meet the needs of all of our students, we need more adults than we currently have, meaning more teachers and more qualified aides, especially but not necessarily exclusively in the primary classrooms. As I stated last month, kids with special needs are not our only kids with our big behaviors, but they are some of the most vulnerable, and this is preventable. By pushing them into regular ed classrooms without supports, we are setting the stage for both the child with special needs and the general ed students to act out in all the ways that we've been describing, and that's a lose-lose scenario. Let's not let it happen again. Thank you. God bless, August.
We have Michelle Joseph, and after that Samantha Moses.
Good evening, board members, cabinet colleagues, community members, and families. I'm going to speak about our special day classes. Many of our mild-moderate special day classes have one paraprofessional for up to 16 students, which is too many students for a special day class. The district bases class size on an average across a district, which is approximately 14.35 students, with 1.28 classroom paraprofessionals and 0.93 paraprofessionals for environmental learning support to assist with the behavior needs. Out of 14 classrooms, four of the classes have 16 students. Five of the classes have 15 students. For many years, special day classes had 12 to 15 students with a paraprofessional and environmental learning professionals as needed. Now we're up to 16 with the potential for the district to add students if they qualify or move into the area. And we already almost had that. One class was almost at 17. At what point will the district recognize that we are trying to run individualized education plans for each student, and more than 15 students is just too many? The state and the district want us to increase mainstreaming. We understand that. Social studies and science may be potential subjects for that increase. However, with 15 to 16 or more students in the room, the special day class teachers cannot send a paraprofessional with students into the general education classroom to support them in academics. Our students also have to take the CASP tests, and that includes a fifth-grade state science test in the spring. If we can't support them in academics, how are the students going to be prepared if they are in a general education classroom and do not understand the curriculum? Before decisions are made to change programs, whatever the program may be, every board member, every SST employee, and every other district employee involved in these decisions needs to be aware of the academic and behavioral challenges of the students. Although brief visits do occur, they do not see the frustrations, the tantrums, hear the screaming, hear the cursing, see the things being thrown, et cetera. Perhaps there are less challenges at different schools in the district, although from what I am hearing, this is not necessarily the case. You need to trust the teachers to know what is best for the students in their classrooms. We are working hard with the students to help them achieve their highest potential academically, socially, and emotionally. We need to be supported by the district and the board. More than 15 students is honestly too many. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
We have Samantha Moses and Steve Gilbert after that. Samantha? Samantha Moses? No? Okay. Steve Gilbert? Steve Gilbert? No? Okay. Let's go on to Ingrid Boyston, and she's talking about the Behavior Committee report. And thank you. Later.
You need five people to talk up.
No, I had two people who are speaking. I didn't believe you were speaking for the Behavior Committee, so whatever you say during... I said I want to have like three or four. Right, and we had a meeting, and I sent out a reminder to everybody. I only had the two. That's okay. All right.
Oh, hang on. Wrong one.
After Ms. Boyston, it's Jackie.
Good evening again. I'm Ingrid Boyston. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you for the last board meeting. Hearing you all talk about the big behavior problem and hearing you discuss it amongst yourselves made me feel like maybe one day I don't have to listen to myself talk about it. So, I really truly appreciated that. And I wanted to thank you for the honest, open discussion that you had where you attempted to listen to and talk to each other. I know it wasn't necessarily pretty, but we don't want pretty. Solutions are hard. It was so good to see you working really hard towards it. Thank you, Mrs. Garibay, for setting it up that way. I, for one, really appreciated everybody being real. There was only one part of the meeting that left me with some confusion at the end, and that had to do with the blue dashboard. So, I'm just going to say it here, and you can clarify for me later if I misheard it. But if the blue dashboard means everything is going well, then our dashboard shouldn't be blue, or the dashboard is not an accurate reflection of what's going on in the classrooms because you don't want these behaviors to continue. We need to be truthful and make sure that what's going on is really happening. If you have zero suspensions because there are no suspendable behaviors, that's wonderful. That's laudable. But if there's zero suspensions just because there's no suspensions possible for any behavior, that's a whole nother thing. And I think we're getting on top of that, but I just needed to point out we need to be really transparent because I think we're headed in that direction, and I love that. If the big concern was that if our dashboard changes color, that the state's going to come in and look at our LCAP, maybe that is a signal that we need to look at our LCAP first. I'm not sure. That was just one thing I was concerned about. I was also really excited to see that we are going to be having a behavior meeting for the parents, a big behavior meeting. But I'm a little concerned because it looks like PBS on the flyer, PBIS, is being... I just think we have to be clear and transparent about it. We can't just cheerlead it and say it's working great when it's one of the things that is being suggested as one of the reasons we have big behaviors in the classrooms. There are so many parts to it that are wonderful, but it is missing clear consequences. It doesn't allow teachers to use the tools that help them prevent the behaviors, and it doesn't have logical consequences that are implementable. Those are things that are insufficient or missing. So, I think we need to be really clear about that when we talk with our parents as well. I did have the opportunity to be on the Behavior Council. It was exciting. There were over 60 people in the room, I think. We only had an hour and a half, so we were not able to quite meet the goal that we were going towards. But we did create, we did make progress. We got to talk to each other and actually begin to understand each other's points of view. And that's going to be really important if we are going to continue and actually make solutions that are functional, that will work for Saugus Union School District. Let's see. I had one more thing I think I wanted to tell you about. I'm a teacher, so I know that learning is messy. Okay? It's been said that when you're between not knowing the answer to a problem and knowing the answer, that middle part, that's really confusing and often scary. But I would rather be here in the middle with you, honestly solving this problem, than either ignoring the problem or only focusing on all the things that are going well. So, I just want to encourage you to continue with the transparency, and thank you so much for the work that you have done so far.
Jackie, and then we have Tammy Messina.
I hope we can be the best school district. We can't fix the problem unless we talk about the problem, so I guess that's where I fit in. A quick recap. My son was kicked on January 14, and I begged for immediate action at meeting number one. Two days after behavior's meeting number two, over a month after my son, on February 20, another third grader was punched in the head, grabbed by the shirt, and kicked in the shin by the same abuser. It took four adults to get him off. This is all told to us by our kids who had to witness it. I sent a very direct email asking for the plan going forward, even though everyone thought someone else should be responding, so it was left completely unanswered, except two board members sharing concern, which I very much appreciated. Thank you, Anna and Mr. Watson. I would love to be able to just pull my kid out in homeschool, but that is not the right thing to do. We need change now. I am confident that I am doing the right thing, speaking up. Can you truly reflect and believe that everything was handled correctly? Is it my responsibility to speak up for all the other children in the district? I'm worried about safety in our schools and have lots of examples and reasons to be concerned, not just for my last of my three kids that's in third that will be done in a few years, or at least the big kid on campus. Now, I have nieces and nephews just starting school in this district. I have been made fully aware of the abuser's rights. You cannot tell me when they are getting a one-on-run. You can't tell me if they will be at my child's recess or lunch. I'm not supposed to talk to any other parent or know if they have been suspended or what their extra support looks like. Is that all correct? Now, what are the rights to the victims? Because we have not been filled in on any of those. Should they have to continue going to school worried every day that they are going to be attacked? You could have collaborated and made quick, peaceful resolution, but instead, I was met with attitude and disregard. I would assume with your experience, you would know how important good communication is, especially in a high-stress situation. A response such as, "Changes have been made in class and playground, and everyone will be safe at school tomorrow", seems much more appropriate than the "It's none of your business" that I got once I finally received a response. There's a lot of room for improvement on how this was handled, and I hope safety is continued as a priority and handled immediately. Every child should feel safe at school.
Yeah, Messina?
Sorry, just need a deep breath after that one. Mr. Trunkie, during the behavior discussion at the last meeting, you raised an important point. "I'm a little confused about what we're supposed to be doing here tonight," you said. And unfortunately, the board had to step in because their one employee, Superintendent Hawkins, failed to implement a plan to resolve the ongoing behavior problems. Children are being injured at school, apparently by the same abusers. Teachers are concerned for their safety and the safety of their students, and teacher satisfaction is abysmal. These are critical issues, and they fall squarely on you, Dr. Hawkins. In your superintendent goals, goal number one is safety and security. You committed to, quote, "facilitate systems and implement actions that ensure not only the physical safety of school facilities, but also the emotional safety and well-being of students and staff." Given the current state of the district, these systems and actions are not working. Dr. Hawkins, you are failing at the very foundation of goal one, which puts a very stable foundation when it's there. You don't have it. Mr. Trunkie is right. The board should not have to get into the nitty-gritty of the classroom behavior. That responsibility was yours, Dr. Hawkins, as superintendent. When you and I spoke, you said, "The buck stops with me", and that's true. But during the behavior discussion at the last meeting, you told the board, "This is about you guys." Actually, Dr. Hawkins, it's about you. Teachers have repeatedly asked for help and support, and they are continuing to do that tonight. They've identified actionable steps you can take tonight to help them in the classroom tomorrow without requiring additional funding or staffing. No one expects you to fix the entire problem overnight, but you can take action now to give them some relief while the Behavior Council addresses the bigger issues. This district loves to tout their awards, and you've earned them. But awards don't matter when kids aren't safe and teachers don't have the tools that they need to succeed and to set up a good learning environment for our children. Dr. Hawkins, it's time for you to take responsibility and implement the necessary changes to ensure the safety and success of our students and the staff. And some of these things you can do tonight. I want to thank the board for addressing these issues and for doing it so publicly at the last meeting. I know that was hard, and you did such a good job. But it needs to go further, and there needs to be some actionable takeaways. And you can do that tonight. The teachers have already told you what you can do. Give them some latitude, some leeway in the classroom, and untie their hands and give them back their tools that don't cost anything, but will let them set in motion while the Behavior Council comes back with a bigger solution. So, I thank you again, President Garibay, for keeping this important issue forward.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our Saugus Teachers Association. Ms. Teresa Garcia.
Good evening, school board members, cabinet colleagues, parents, and community members. We'd like to congratulate our student award winners this evening. Creativity and the ability to think outside of the box are important skills that will serve you well in the future. We're so very proud of you. At our last board meeting, I spoke about secondary traumatic stress, primarily due to the cost of caring. My reason for this was to acknowledge the toll that our work can take on teachers and to highlight the fact that we need support. I received many phone calls and emails from grateful teachers who thanked me for bringing up this topic. As a matter of fact, we often hear from teachers who thank us for being their voice, and we're honored to do so. You know, before we conducted the survey that has been referred to so often at these meetings, we heard that it was us, STA leadership, that were just negative and making things up. This could not be further from the truth. It made me ponder a question that we've been frequently asked. What does support look like? It could be the little things, like receiving a little mochi toy in our work mailbox, or having someone sincerely listen to feedback when we discuss the challenges that we face. Or the big things, like making us a part of the problem-solving process and taking action when we face big challenges, the ones that leave us feeling numb, exhausted, and pleading for help. At our last board meeting, a community member asked me why our message always sounds a little bit different from the administrators' message. She said that their message always sounds like everything is wonderful, but when teachers speak, a different story is told. I have to admit, she's not wrong. But here's the thing. All of the information that administrators share in their message is true as well. As teachers, we do it all. We run the PLCs. We scrutinize the data from iReady Diagnostics and IABs. We lesson plan. We make connections with our community. We make our classrooms warm and inviting places. We pilot new programs. We connect with our students. We communicate with our families. We attend school events, staff meetings, and admin CIP meetings. We join committees, and we learn new methods. The list truly goes on and on. And never, not once, did we ever say that we did not want to work hard. Never, not once, did we ever say that we don't want to teach the students that are placed in our classes. What we have said is that we need support. That's a very different message. And it should be obvious as at this meeting, all staff were recognized with the You Made a Difference Award for closing the learning gap as a result of the pandemic. We're proud of the meaningful work that we do every day, and we're excited to continue working together with our board and our cabinet and our community as we strive for excellence in elementary education every single day. However, one thing we will not do is stop being a voice for our teachers. We will continue on our quest for transparent, open, and honest communication with our board members and our cabinet in order to represent our teachers. As Abraham Lincoln once said, "Be sure to put your feet in the right place, then stand firm." Thank you.
And next up, we have CSCA, Ms. Delmi Calderon.
Good evening. Okay, it's so hard to get up here, and I'm just going to keep it real. It is so hard. Yes, please. Good evening, cabinet, board members, and community members. Congratulations to the students who received the Artistic Achievement Award and to the staff that received the You Made a Difference Award. Thank you so much. Your outstanding performance will continue to impact others in the community. To our CSCA, thank you, thank you, and thank you for your outstanding commitment to students by continuing to reflect your personal integrity and core values. It is hard to witness all of your bruises and bite marks, but even harder to see you tear up because how much you love what you do. It is amazing to see that even through your daily behavior challenges you face, you continue to show your enthusiasm by seeking solutions and reflecting on ideas as you talk to each other, even when you lack support. While I hold a very humble position, I have the obligation to be the voice of the CSCA members. It is my desire to continue to expose the many needs and the main concerns of the members in order to bring to the table a deeper understanding of what is impacting the well-being of the classified employees without being afraid. I know that if we, if we long together, excuse me. I know that if we long to work together as a team, we can contribute more to the growth of this district and move away from the negativity that is currently suffering due to the ongoing issues behaviors. I have faith that our current board, that our current board will implement workable plans to address behaviors and mobilize resources to increase the morale of the staff. After the uncertainties of parents facing their cuts to their hours, cuts to their hours, we are happy to report that after bringing up all member concerns, we were able to reach an agreement with the district. This was such a great relief for a parent educator who worked so hard assisting, teaching and taking care of students' needs every single day. This would have been devastating financially and mentally for parents who play a crucial daily role in providing support to both teachers and students in our community. It is frustrating when budget decisions don't prioritize the people who do most for the kids. Decision making is not always easy, but if we have shared vision, we can succeed even faster. Please, excuse me, please keep in mind that the hard workers on the front lines are the ones that move the force forward. We understand that the district faces ongoing monetary decisions and limitations financially, but I plead to our board members that if in the future they are faced with the needs to cut hours, that we work together to ensure that, that the cuts are made in a logical way that impacts our stu-, the, in a logical way that impacts our students and at the lowest paid workers, the least. On behalf of CSCA, thank you and we look forward to signing that MOU.
Thank you. From our SAGA Administrators Association, Ms. Michelle Velikrod- Velikrodny.
Velikrodny. Think about hitting the road with your knee.
Okay, Mrs. Velikrodny.
Good evening, governing board and cabinet. I'm Michelle Velikrodny, Principal at Bridgeport Elementary, speaking on behalf of the SAGA Administrators Association. Congratulations to our students who earned the Artistic Achievement Award tonight. Like Mr. Clement, I would never have earned this award, so I admire their creativity and talent. In addition, congratulations to SAGA for national recognition for continuing to pursue personal and academic success for every child. I'm grateful to work together for the achievement for all of our students. And no, every day, everything about every day isn't wonderful, but there sure is a lot to celebrate. As a basketball fan, I do love March because it is March Madness for college basketball playoffs. And as an educator, I think we have our own March Madness as the month of March is an amazing time of the year for learning. We have a full month with no breaks to intentionally focus and hone in on the essential standards and to provide intervention and extension to fit our students' needs. iReady Diagnostic II results have been analyzed, small groups have been adjusted, and additional training by iReady has assisted sites to access strategies, tools and lessons for students' improvement and growth. In addition, the BPST, Basic Phonics Skills Assessment, was just finished with our K through 2 students. And now that data will be used to strengthen students' literacy skills. One of the best parts of elementary school is the impact we are able to have on students acquiring these foundational reading skills. And kudos to our teachers for providing that structured systematic instruction to help all of our students become successful readers. Furthermore, for students in grades three through six, March Madness consists of systematic instruction and opportunities to practice math and language arts and for our fifth grade science performance tasks. Taking these layered tasks apart, piece by piece, teaching students what they are being asked to do, guiding them through how to interpret and solve the task and then synthesizing the pieces into a comprehensive, robust response is no small feat. But as we teach our students, we can do hard things. Thank you to TOSSAs in particular for their guidance, support and resources to help teachers instruct their students effectively in this weighty work. In addition to our academic data, we are also receiving our SEL, Social Emotional Learning Data, from the recent Panorama screener teachers conducted for their students and that students in grades three through six answered about themselves. Each site will take time to further consider strengths and areas for growth in their students and to help them develop. For example, at Bridgeport, we saw room for improvement in having a growth mindset ironically. So staff brainstormed ways to incorporate strategies and tools to support this during daily social emotional learning. This data is helpful to identify our students' needs based on their responses and then to act swiftly to meet their needs. Of course, we'll also share this information with parents and caregivers so we can work together to model growth mindset to our students. As you know, our parent principal meetings at the school sites promote further collaboration. With Dr. Hawkins visiting these meetings, several schools have focused on positive discipline at home and school. Often, Mrs. Nowakowski has joined the conversation as well as other staff, such as the school psychologist, social worker and behaviorist. These conversations have been rich and productive with a focus on working together to find solutions to behavior challenges and of course, to benefit all of our students' character development and well-being. Because in March, we recognize women in history, I quote Clara Barton to close, founder of the American Red Cross. She said, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." As we work together to achieve more for our students, may we creatively and compassionately find ways to meet our students' needs. Thank you.
Do we have a representative from our parent leader organizations? Okay. Okay, moving on to representative from the Child Development Program, Ms. Mary Mann. Ms. Mary Mann, are you in the house? She's not here. Okay, well then we will move on to our superintendent and cabinet reports.
Good evening, everyone. I again would like to echo what everybody else had said tonight about congratulations for the students on the Artistic Achievement Award. I have also limited artistic skills, but I do know that with our students, whether it's an adult in their life, a teacher, a parent or somebody, saw that talent in them and encouraged that and helped nurture that. So just keep that in mind for our students who were recognized tonight and looking forward to seeing how that grows within them. Also, congratulations to everybody on You Make a Difference. I came during COVID and I don't recommend that, Mr. Clement as well. I had to learn people on screens and then relearn them all over again. And our department actually had the privilege of being one of the first to bring our students back. We first brought our students back for the one-to-one assessments that they so desperately needed that were on hold. And then we slowly brought back our special education students. And just through that process, when Dr. Hawkins talked about every single person in this organization, it took so many departments to really plan carefully and making sure things happen. We didn't do it because we thought there was going to be an award or we were worried about test scores or anything. People truly did that because they knew it was what's best for students. From maintenance and grounds and all of the, I'll just say kind of the crazy things during COVID. Masking, not masking, new rules, old rules. There was so much happening that we sort of focused on that felt like we were taking away from, our main goal is learning of students, but really through that, it was all of those things that we needed to make sure that the students continued to learn and all the adults around them. And we talk about truly, it takes a village. It really was that. And, and I, I was so fortunate to be able to experience that. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody and the rest of, I have two presentations tonight. So I will pass it on to Mr. Clement.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just really want to talk about the, the collaboration that I've seen and the teams and their efficacy that's been built. You can definitely see and hear the teams work together and talk about each other, maybe a little bit differently than when we first came back and we were all in isolation at our homes in COVID. We can definitely see that as a result in our work. So I think that is a big piece of what we've been doing is really working together and building up each other's skills and areas where you might have something that you need a little help in and then you have a skill set that your colleague might need your help in. So I appreciate all that and I just thank everyone for everything that they've done to get us where we are.
Dr. Seaman. I really don't have anything to report, but congratulations to all of our award winners.
Mr. England.
I'm going to save all my fun facts and interesting tidbits for my presentation later.
Dr. Hawkins.
Well, I've already thanked everybody for their work on the Made a Difference Award. I'd like to congratulate the students on their artistic piece. I was an art major for three and a half years. And so I know the benefit of having that artistic ability and what it does for their ability to disconnect and, and understand themselves. And, and I think it's just a really great piece that we keep that very central. It is Read Across America Week and I want to thank Ms. Abril at Tesoro for having me come and read a book today. I had so much fun in second grade reading the story. I hope the lesson afterwards went well. It was fun to read Hair Love because it was so counter to who I am and yet so fun to see them predict and, and talk and be so interested. I've also, as you know, been teaching in classrooms for at least four hours a day. I know Ms. Abril and Ms. Marshall, we have, we have your date set up, but I have had the opportunity to work in Mrs. Lowry's TK room at Highlands. I went there twice because my time at the coffee with the principal at Plum Canyon took so long on Friday. It took up some of that time. But I will say that I got to see something really amazing. Mr. Lowry and Mrs. Lowry both work at Highlands and Mr. Lowry teaches sixth grade and Mrs. Lowry teaches TK. And they have a buddy program for PE that is just absolutely amazing. I've never seen the older kids take such great care of the littles. Usually when we put them together, they do things together and, and all of that is really great. But this group of sixth graders and all of these TK students together, they really take care of them, boo-boos and all. And I had the opportunity to use the parachute, which is, if, if none of you remember the parachute or you're not educators, getting to use a parachute at PE is really cool. I paid for it later because of course I made it harder by putting a ball on it. So then we were bouncing it and there's lots of shaking, but it was very fun. I'm going to be in Mrs. Dolder's class tomorrow, third grade at Bridgeport. And I'm going to be in Mrs. Metcabe Davis's class on Friday, which is one of our SDC classes. And I'm having a lot of fun doing it because I get to do a lot of writing instruction, which is very, very fun, but it also gives me the insight into the, into the different grades, the different schools. It's a long period of time, so that short period of time is still positive, but those longer periods of time are too. So thank you to everybody who's let me do it and more, more reports to follow.
Great, thank you. Mr. Watson.
I just want to clarify, the sixth graders and the littles weren't using the parachute together, were they?
Yes, which is something else, so.
Those guys will go flying.
Well, what was really fun was the elders, we lifted it up and then we put it down on the ground and all the littles got to be underneath.
Oh.
When we had the ball, it was fun, but it was harder because when you have two different height people, it doesn't pop as nicely as what you would like. But they all really liked it and they, they enjoyed themselves.
Awesome, love it. I only have one thing to report tonight and it's for my colleagues. We're coming up on that time of year when we elect LACSA E-Board members. The executive board is elected for two-year terms. As you all know, I've sat on that board for the last two years and my term is up. I am not seeking reelection on that board. So you should have received an email, which I also forwarded to you a little bit earlier this evening if you'd like to apply. I would certainly support you, but whether you apply and are elected or not, I will continue to represent our district at LACSA.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Trunki.
Congratulations again to all of our Artistic Achievement Award winners. And thank you again to all of our employees for your hard work and dedication. Next week is Legislative Action Week. The California School Boards Association has set up meetings for trustees with their representatives. So I will be meeting with our Assembly Member and our Senator. I hope some of my colleagues can join me. We will be talking about pending legislation as well as any local issues that need focus. A week ago Monday, I attended the Santa Clarita Valley Trustees Association. We also elected officers for the next year. And we heard a great presentation from a former Assembly Member and State Superintendent of Public Instruction on budget and legislative priorities for the coming year. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper.
I attended the ribbon cutting of Helmers. It's really neat, the, the shared space. So there's a big, you know, fence around it so that the kids are safe during the school day and then it's open for the community when the school's not in session. I was the first adult down the rolling slide, followed by council members Jason Gibbs and Lorene West. And of course, Robin Deschamme went down with us too. It goes really fast. I'm really looking forward to the presentations tonight. I love that we have the Behavior Council and the Special Education Task Force Committee together because I think that they're very much related. And I don't know if you all noticed, but we have from Pilar Chavo's office, Crystal Carr and from George Whiteside's office, Ms. Shannon Hurst. And I just think it's really great that we, that, that they're sending representatives to come listen to us once in a while and I really appreciate that. That's it.
Great, thank you. Ms. Grease.
Hi, everybody. Everyone is so quiet. Okay. I, I think my board report is just more about outstanding topics and discussions. So I've been having a lot of discussions with different groups throughout the district. We've heard, you know, a couple of meetings past, a lot about the DLI program and some of the concerns that those teachers have been having. Whether it be teachers leaving, resources not being available in Spanish, which I think is really important to have for a DLI program, and how it's being provided. Behavioral challenges for students as a result of confusions or lack of communications, all of which were provided by the public speakers that have spoken at the last two board meetings. So my question for the district, and I'll send a follow-up email, is to learn a little bit more about the DLI program at Highlands, how it's growing, how it's been performing, what resources those teachers have, what they don't have, what are they asking for that they're not getting? How is admin supporting them above and beyond what the district is providing? So I'll send a follow-up email, but I'm interested to learn more about that program at Highlands because I have heard that it is growing exponentially. So to provide services and resources, I think is important. I'm also looking forward to the district's response on my TOSA email. Just more about a deep dive into that program, how you become a TOSA, what special privileges do TOSSAs get, how long are they in that position? What does it look like to maybe exit and offer the position to other members within the district? So I'm looking forward to that response. The other thing, which I wasn't going to talk about, but apparently it's Read Across America Week. I'd love to get an update from Mr. Clement on if we have enough data regarding the new library schedule and what that looks like, because I know there's been a lot of unfavorable feedback on the new schedule. And considering it's Read Across, Across America Week, what are we doing about that feedback? And if that opens us up to relooking at it so that the schedule goes back to maybe what it was or something a little bit more beneficial for the teachers and the students? And then the last thing is the Behavior Council updates. I'm optimistic and excited to hear what the status and what the meetings and the feedback has been like at the first meeting. So I'm curious to know what happened. I think a good segue to that is this PBIS meeting that we're offering for parents. We've heard over and over again that PBS is not working. So I'm not quite sure why we're offering insight into PBIS for our parents when we know that it's not working. Some of it is working, aspects of it are working, but not as a whole. So I'm, I'm curious to know what that presentation looks like and what we're communicating out to the community because I think it's far different than potentially what's actually happening in the district. So that's it.
All right, and I was going to say, Mrs. Grease provided me a really good segue, but then she went on to other topics. So, but she did mention the dual language instruction program. I actually planned to make a visit to Highlands this week. I'm really looking forward to it. I'm bilingual, I don't know if anybody knows that, but, but I am. And so I think it's really neat to, to teach kids to speak a second language and I think there's a lot of value in that. So I'm just really excited to be hopefully a fly on the wall. I'm sure that's hard to do, but I just kind of want to understand how the program works and to see what resources the teachers have now and how we can continue to support that program so that it is a good program for our students and they can continue to, to grow. So that's number one. And then I just wanted to, to, to thank Mrs. Abril for the opportunity to participate in Read Across America. I'm looking forward to that at Tesoro on Friday. I always love being in the classroom. That's my favorite thing I do, volunteering in the classroom and just, again, spending time with the kids, learning from them, hearing what they, you know, what they're doing. And this time I get to read, so I'm going to use my best reading voice when I'm there. And, and also now I realize that Mrs., or sorry, Dr. Hawkins is going to be in Mrs. Dolder's class tomorrow. I'm going to have to tell my son to be on his best.
Well, hopefully now I'm on my best.
No, but just thank you again for everything that you all do. And again, you know, sincerely, we really appreciate this recognition that we got. It's not a recognition for us, it's really for all the work that you all do. So thank you so much and that's it for me. We are going to move on to the consent calendar. Let's see, do we have any items to remove from the consent calendar?
I have a couple of questions on D5.
Okay, so we'll remove D5. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
I need to pull off F1 because I have someone on the personnel report.
Okay, so D and F1, right? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar removing D as well as F1?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, moving on to consent calendar, item D, Education Services. Do we have a cabinet report? So.
Was it the entire section D or D5?
D5.
Oh, I'm sorry, D5, D5. Go back.
No, we need the question.
Yeah, my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, she has to have it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Grease, go ahead, what was your question?
Um, who is in the pilot group for this?
So the TOSSAs are involved in that, our two literacy TOSSAs, but essentially for this pilot, because there's four different programs that we're looking at, right? So this is one of the four. And what they decided to do with this one is they're using a different teacher for each grade level. So they're going to do a different smattering of grade levels and teachers from across the whole entire district.
Okay.
So we had asked teachers that were interested and the people that responded from a survey of all of, all of the K2 teachers.
So it's only K through 2?
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah, because it's a K two screener.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, that wasn't stated in the thing, so thanks. And then is it, is this particular screener the one that we have to use that has to be implemented by June or the fact that we just need a screener?
It's one of the four options.
One of the four.
So we're taking a look at three of them. One of them doesn't have a Spanish component, so because of D. Kind of taken that one off the board, but we're looking at the other three.
Okay, so there's only three. And then when are you making a decision on the three?
Well, by June, you know, so as soon as we can get them in and really start looking at them. We've started meeting with the publishers right away and getting to know them as much as we can.
And is it one teacher or is it one from K first, second for each of the three?
It's one teacher. Well, they're doing a a series of classrooms, right? They're each one doing.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying, I'm trying, okay, so I'm trying to understand if we've got, if our K population is twenty teachers. Are we asking one teacher or are we asking ten teachers so that you have a good group of respondents?
Yeah, multiple teachers from each grade.
So two, three?
I would say probably more than that even.
So we don't know. You don't know yet. I just want specifics. That's what I'm trying to do.
I don't have the number right in front of me of how many in each particular, but I know that it's across all of K one, two.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I know that we tend to roll out programs without teacher or staff input. So I just want to make sure that we're getting a good sample size of teachers that can give the actual real-life feedback for these screeners. Because I know with the DESA Mini, we had an adverse effect and we still went forward with it. So I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
So give them an opportunity to work with different teachers and work right with the TOSA as they're giving the assessment. So they can learn about it and give their feedback and input. So we feel good about it.
Any additional questions? Okay, do we have a motion in a second to approve D five?
I'll move to approve item D five, please.
Second?
Don't we kind of need to approve all of them? Because you pulled all of D off of the consent.
Oh, that's true. Good point. That's right. Move to approve D, one through six.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. And we also pulled consent calendar F one. Did you want to explain why?
Oh, just because I know somebody on there.
So we have a motion to approve them?
I'll I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, I've seen. Thank you. All right, moving on to our presentations, Behavior Council update.
All right, so I would like to invite Samantha McAluso from North Park and Amanda Howard from Foster. They are the folks who volunteered to share our progress today.
Great. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Samantha McAluso. I am the social worker at North Park. First-time speaker, longtime listener. I want to start by thanking the board and the cabinet. Hawkins, our teachers and our staff and our parents and our community members. Thank you for giving us some time to just talk about this. It's going to be brief, but we want to give you guys a a good update. We are here to talk about the Behavior Council. Uh, as we all know, behavior is one of the biggest issues we're facing as educators. I know you all remember when we were younger. Behaviors like we see today didn't really happen, or they happened where we couldn't see them. They were not as obvious. And there's some reasons why we see these difference differences. I remember growing up, getting in trouble, having to sit out at recess or get things taken away, such as participation in a class event. Um, I think we can all remember the kids who did something and were benched or the consequences that were obvious and everyone knew what was going to happen. Unfortunately, we are in a different time and one of the biggest barriers are the laws, which restrict a lot of what we are able to do as a school or district. It often feels like our hands are tied. Sometimes consequences are not obvious or seem small compared to the incident. One of the more challenging aspects of the law is what we can't share about the other students and what is being done because of privacy laws. And I know that we've talked about this. Um, often it makes it seem like things aren't being done, which is understandable. But the intent is not to hide anything, but to protect the privacy of students. So what can be done? What are we doing? It's not just parents that want solutions, but all the educators are looking to find the best way to meet the needs of our students. The Behavior Council was created to address these concerns. Currently, the Behavior Council is comprised of our board-certified behavior analysts, our BCBAs, um, our teachers from each site. And the school's social workers. And I will hand it over to my esteemed colleague.
Thank you. So the Behavior Council, we've met twice so far. At our first meeting in January, we identified the biggest topics topics of concerns and developed a priority order of what needs to be addressed. The biggest concern that was identified was discipline and consequences. This was followed by behavior modification. At our second meeting, multiple teams, I think there were eight, if I remember right, of six to eight staff members worked together to build a list of classroom and school consequences that included behavior examples and appropriate consequence for that behavior. The grade levels that consequences would be appropriate for and what actions were expected from staff members. We also discussed how to better include parents in supporting the behavioral needs at school. Our ultimate goal is to come up with a list of consequences that can be determined by board policy and can be used at school sites. It quickly became apparent that the time allotted wouldn't be enough. So as a council, we requested a full-day meeting, uh, at the district to continue our work, which meant as teachers would be out of the class for a full day. But we knew that this work was incredibly important. So Dr. Hawkins, uh, was able to arrange for us to meet again on March thirteenth. So we will be meeting again next week for the full day. In addition, she was also able to arrange for each member of the Behavior Council to receive two books. That, uh, were recommended to support appropriate actions when dealing with student behaviors. And the Behavior Council team members will be able to share these resources with their colleagues and administrators as well. In the future, we plan to bring in parents and additional staff so that we can continue to partner with each other and get feedback from multiple groups. Some of the challenges we face, like Sam talked about, were the laws that have to be taken into consideration. Ties in as teachers with our, uh, our licenses as well. So we want to make sure we follow the law so we can keep our license. Also, uh, the different school cultures, since each school has its own unique needs and strengths. And ensuring that actions are developmentally appropriate. As a sixth-grade teacher, what works for my students won't work for kindergartners and vice versa. As a Behavior Council, we hope to come up with a general consensus that we can all agree upon. While recognizing that not everything will be liked by everyone. I know that no one likes hearing this part, but this is a process that does take a lot of time. If there was a magic fix that we could snap our fingers, we would definitely love to do that. But that is where we are given all of the challenges that this difficult topic faces. However, by working together, having the difficult conversations and putting student needs first, all of our students at SUSD will benefit from this process. So thank you and we look forward to continuing the the process.
Thank you. All right, are we asking questions? I'll go down the row. Mr. Watson? Okay, yeah, we might have, we may have questions.
I think they sort of hope they get.
And that concludes the question. Welcome back. Um, so appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much. And I do appreciate that it's not easy. I think it's well cited that. The second most prevalent fear in adults in the world is public speaking. And given such a hot-button issue in our district over the last few months. Thank you very much, both for your work on the committee as well as to your colleagues, but then also being willing to come here and present to us tonight. Just had one question. Um, you talked about, uh, the consequences that your team was working to develop. Are they exemplary exemplary or prescriptive in nature? Meaning, were you working to give some examples for? If this were to happen, then maybe a teacher could do this, or were they more prescriptive? When a child does this, we do this.
If your first one, if it was supposed to happen, a teacher could do this, because obviously every situation is a little bit different. Every every student is a little bit different. So we don't want to be put into a a box, but give options of what could happen. When those those behaviors come about.
Terrific, thank you.
Table at the council, just so that you know, had their different ways of kind of expressing those things. Um, and that's what we're still working on is kind of whittling that out all down and putting it together so that we can kind of present that more concise.
Well, we look forward to that more concise and robust information later.
Thank you. Mr. Trunki?
Uh, I don't have any questions. Just thank you for your participation in the committee. And I look forward to seeing your recommendations, especially with board policies.
Thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you all for jumping on the hot seat. Everyone that's working on the council, we really appreciate your time and your input and your wisdom. You guys are in the classroom. I I received an email and I think you all did that that led me to believe that I wasn't really clear what I said, or or maybe we weren't clear. When I was talking about suspension at the last meeting, I didn't mean suspend willy-nilly. I just wanted the dashboard to not be the deciding factor. That that was, so I just wanted to make that clear. And then I was thinking about when I was in school. One of the punishments was to run laps and I don't think that kids are allowed to do that anymore, but. I could be wrong. Uh, I just recalled one day where I was just bored out of my mind. And I intentionally got in trouble just so I could get out of the classroom and run laps. But, um, but the other thing that I just wanted to add and just, you know, throw it out there, you can. Throw it out or whatever. Um, this goes back to a book that, uh, Mrs. Garibay recommended upstream. And and I know that you guys like. I don't know how to explain this, but, um, in addition to consequences, like, like before the behavior happens. Like, like you know, your students. Like, maybe you guys can bounce around ideas of addressing issues before they happen, if that makes sense.
And that's part of what we've we've been talking about as well, but thank you for.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you again for coming out tonight.
Ms. Grease?
Yeah. So you guys have met twice, January, and then what was the last time you met?
In February, I believe this is twentieth.
So you guys have been working on a list by grade level, right, of be of discipline and consequences? What's that list look like? What's on the list?
So what we've done so far is we've gone into our individual groups and then at our next meeting, we're going to come together and bring it all together to create a.
So. So we don't have, you you can't share with us today what what those lists of consequences are by grade?
They developed them by school site, just to be clear. And put those together. Not every school site developed them by grade level. So now the committee is meeting to decide what is appropriate and what that would look like and what it would present to you.
So I think from my perspective, considering I've been talking about this for two years since I've been on this board. And most recently, we've been talking about this a lot. But I think what would be helpful for the board, knowing that this is such a hot topic, that. Can we receive a recap of what is happening after these meetings? Can we have something that we can reference at the DIAS so that we understand what is being talked about? Because I think the concern and the challenge that we are all talking about is, and we continue to say, this process takes a lot of time. And for parents whose children are being kicked in the stomach or hair pulled or bit or whatever. They don't want to hear that the process takes a lot of time. So to hear that, once again, we're in March, right? And thankfully, we have a full-day meeting because I understand that we really only had thirty minutes to discuss the issues, right? From what I understand from people at the meeting, we had thirty minutes to discuss. Concrete concurrently, what was happening? We're going to wait till March thirteenth and then the next behavioral update is April, which I think again prolongs it. So what I'm looking for at the DIAS and an understanding is, what are we literally doing? What are we literally talking about that can be shared with the board, that can be shared with the community? Because again, we're prolonging it. It's another month and another month and another month. So I don't, I don't know what the, um, impetus of of today's presentation was. Thank you for the presentation. But I'm personally looking for something that's a little bit more actionable, because we've been talking about it for so long. We've been hearing from parents and community members of what's happening to their kids and I think we owe it to them. So I'm not going to let it go, but I really think that we need to have some sort of recap after each meeting. So that the board members know what's being discussed, so that we can either action on it at the next board meeting or not. So that would be my feedback. My second question is, the last time we spoke about this, it, you know, suspensions came up. And it's suspensions that are warranted, not just willy-nilly suspensions. I'm curious, based on some, some of the, um, some of the the comments that have been made by community members. Have we done any suspensions that have been warranted? Or what has been the protocol or the 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 new way of thinking that we've instituted over the last two weeks? For behaviors that are currently going on? And I think that's more of a district question because obviously you guys want to know.
Can I let them sit down if if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a this conversation? Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so. Two things. Um, number one, thank you so much for your time and I appreciate all the sixty volunteers that are working on this. It does take a lot of effort and a lot of, um, collaboration and and I appreciate that. So thank you and thank you for presenting tonight. Um, as we were working on this, I knew that it wasn't going to be an easy fix. So what I think we did at the last meeting, which I think was critical, was we made it clear from a board perspective, right? We all spoke about this and said, hey, we're not okay with these things happening. So if that means that we need to do things different right now, do those things different right now. We're not going to wait until you guys present something to us to then move forward, right? So an example is, I think we were all pretty clear about suspension, right? We said, look, if we need to do a suspension and it's warranted, do it. I don't think we're waiting for direction from 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 you, you know, from the teachers and from the all the specialists, um, to do that, right? Or am I wrong?
Right.
Okay, so then, so then I guess that that answers that question, right? So right now, we we don't need to hesitate. We're not stopping because this hasn't finalized. This takes time. This is not something you do in a week. It's not something you do in two weeks. If we're going to do it right, we need to get the right people at the table, talking about the issue and providing us with the board. And we're all going to have an opportunity to talk about it, right? So we don't need to participate in their meetings because they're going to share all that stuff at some point. They are. They're going to tell us every single thing. When they're done with it.
And when is that? When are they going to be done with it? Is this only a five-month thing? Like, I'm just curious. We don't know the details.
I I I don't think we need to put a deadline on things. I and I I share your urgency, okay? I share that. No, I really do.
I don't know because.
I'm telling you I do, okay? So I I share that with you. I think this is very important and it's not something that we want to sleep on, right? So every single time that we meet, I think it's important that we get an update and that we hear what's happening. But I don't think it's necessary for us to be a part of those conversations to know that things are happening. But again, I think that the discussion we had last time was, we all agree that it's not okay for certain things to happen. So if things are happening that warrant suspension, we need to call the parents immediately. We need to do all those things. We're going to do them. We're not going to wait for them to tell us.
And I just want to understand since we last met, what have been, what has happened, what has occurred with the behavioral problems that we've had? I'm just asking a simple question. And I think it's up to the board to decide if they'd like to attend one of those meetings. Because I know that I would like to attend and I have already stated that I will attend.
I think those meetings are meant for the, and I think we talked about this too, and and everybody can help me out if I'm missing something. But I think the intent is to have the people, the the specialists, right, to have the educators, the counselors, the the administrators. All the folks that are dealing with the the issues on a daily basis, having those folks come together to to do their thing, right? I don't think we need to interject in the work that they're doing because I trust, I know that they're doing the right thing. Because these are the people that deal with these issues every single day. So they they have a vested interest, just like we do. Because we're the ones that are getting, you know, having parents come up and tell us that, you know, this happened, that happened. We don't want to hear it because we want to make sure the kids are safe. And I think they have that same vested interest to do something.
So are you saying I'm not allowed to go?
I'm saying the the idea, the intent of this group was for it to be all the educators, the specialists, and that's it.
So that's a yes. I just want to confirm. You're telling me I cannot go?
Yes.
You have more questions for us?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Garibay, can I add something about the suspensions?
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge suspensions don't generally better the behavior of the child being suspended.
Right.
I just want to acknowledge that. But what it will do is hopefully, you know, wake up the parents. Like if it's serious enough that they be suspended, but also. And I know it's only like for a day at a time, but it's a little respite for the teacher and the and the other kids. Because I think that's the the issue that keeps coming up is what's happening to the other kids when. A child is misbehaving severely. And I understand the need for privacy and I understand that there's laws surrounding that. But I think that that's kind of. One of the, one of the, I guess, benefits, if you can call it that.
Great. Any other comments, thoughts?
Any other comments, thoughts? No? All right, moving on. Superintendent, Special Education Task Force Committee?
So as you know, we put together a superintendent Special Education Task Force to go through the FICMAT process, where we had a report. Ms. Quinn and Ms. Beres were the leaders on this, even though it's the superintendent's group. I got to have an opportunity to meet with all of these folks. It was to really whittle down the recommendations that were in the FICMAT report and see where we could start. And so we have representatives from that task force who are going to present with Mrs. Beres and Ms. Quinn.
Thank you. I have the privilege of being joined by some of the task force members tonight, and before we get started, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and then we'll go ahead and get started.
I'm Darcy Quinn. I'm the Director of Student Services. As a reminder, the Special Education Task Force started last spring, and it really kind of came out of conversations that we have in our office just almost every day, talking about our programs, how we can make improvements in our programs. We're always looking to improve, also looking at that we were having issues with staffing, a shortage in special education teachers and support staff. And so from that, the idea of putting together a group of individuals to look at some of our programs, things that we were, try to find things that we were doing well, and also identify any areas that we may be able to improve. So that was how it started last spring, and we had really hoped that we would end up here one day to present to you all the ideas that came from the task force, and really just to focus on how to improve our programs for our students and for our staff, and be able to still remain fiscally responsible, and also address some of our staffing concerns that we were having at the same time. So it was a lofty task that we took on, and you can go to the next slide. I've read all of that already, so next one. And so for that task, we gathered a very large group of people. We wanted to make sure that we had representatives from all of the different school sites. So we had some member from each school site. We made sure we had parents on the committee, paraeducators, and then we had teachers from resource specialists to inclusion teachers, to SDC teachers, our RAP teachers. And then we had union partners on our committee as well, and we had social workers. So we had a whole group, and we made sure just that every single special education job-alike was represented, along with every single school site, and parents. Thank you. Next slide. I'm sorry, back. I didn't see you switched it. So that just had the meeting dates. So we had multiple meetings. That one's... All right. Well, it had the meeting dates. It just showed that we had multiple meetings. We met two, seven different times, or today, I guess, is our seventh time. So we had many discussions. Some of them were half-day, some of them were full-day.
I'm going to let Mr. Heinlein catch up, or go back.
Did you finish something?
Perfect. Those were the meeting dates that Ms. Quinn spoke about. Thank you, Mr. Heinlein. Next slide, please. That one's not in there either? Okay. I'll make sure that we get to the current one pulled down and posted when I am on the agenda. It looks like it's the right one, but I'll make sure I get that for you. Sorry about that. So this, what I wanted to share is, as Ms. Quinn described, we had many different people from different perspectives that joined the task force. And I think Ms. Boyson said tonight so eloquently, like, at our last Behavior Council meeting, with the small tables, we were able to listen to each other, to talk, and to gain some perspective. And as you can, as you heard about all the different members, that not everybody agreed, everybody had a different perspective, and that's really why such a wide range of people were chosen for the task force. So one of the first things we did was, from our own anecdotal experience, from their perspective, whether it was a classified person, or a teacher or administrator, brainstormed the things that we were really doing well. And so we wanted to gather that list, as well as the things that we had an area of opportunity. And I know people have said, we only talk about the things that we do well, but we recognize that there were some areas of improvement. So we had that discussion at the first group. We compiled everybody's idea, and then I took that, and then these were the themes that came out of that. Again, some of the themes that we were doing well was sort of that journey on inclusive practices. You've heard about that, collaboration. You've heard over and over again about the amazing staff we have. And then you've also heard this in some other things echoing areas of opportunity, including training. That's always difficult to try and find training time, and there's so many different things that our staff needs support on in training, as well as staffing. Special education is a really hard area to find staff and then keep staff for. So those were the areas of the themes that came out of that from our first brainstorm session. Next slide, please. The next thing that we had is, FICMAT came and presented at a school board meeting. They came and did a study with our district. They were here that first week-ish in September, and they had their findings around October, maybe October, November at a board meeting. And so because we had this unique task force, we asked if they would come present the findings, specifically for the task force. They did that. And I just wanted to review some of the findings that were relevant to the task force. They did also, they did being FICMAT, had some recommendations for transportation and fiscal as well, but those were really detailed in terms of budget codes and some of the other things. So the things that are listed here from FICMAT are the things that the task force had control over, so to speak, and also could discuss in relationship to those. So some of those themes were exit rates, MTSS, inclusive opportunities, our preschool programming. Next slide, please. Our staffing, paraeducators, our one-to-one, our adult ratios in our SDC classes, and SKIAS. We call them here ELS, or environmental learning supports. The CEOPA calls them SKIAS. Other people may call them one-to-one aides, but again, it's the additional adult support for students. So those were the recommendations that FICMAT had for us to take a look at, some areas of opportunity. Next slide, please.
I think that's me. Okay. First of all, I have to say, it was a really great task force to be a part of, because a lot of work got done. So that was really of great value. So we were broken up into groups, where we had, amongst our groups, we would have perhaps like, in my team, I had a speech and language therapist, we had resource teachers, we had general ed teachers, we had SDC teachers. So we had lots of different perspectives. We have parents on our committees, in our small groups as well. So we were tasked quite a bit to take the big scope and then just narrow it down. And then we narrow it down, and then we had another task to narrow it down again, to really look at patterns, things that we knew that we wanted to, or we felt like we needed to address. So it was a great opportunity to do that. It took, you know, some various sessions to get to that place. But this is what, essentially, we came, you know, we came with this really important list, right? And then Michelle said, hmm, or Ms. Beres, so that's going to be really a lot to tackle right away. So let's go ahead and take that list then, and look at that again. So what she did, if you go to the next slide, I can kind of show you what we did with all of these. So the headings were put on post-its across the room, very large-scale post-its around the room. And then we were asked to then look at within the, well, we were asked to, first, we were asked to go through and pick the ones that were most important, that we thought were most critical. And so what we did notice in talking amongst each other, we noticed some themes, themes on processes, themes on training, themes on communication. So that kind of stood out just in and of itself right from the get-go, as we were looking at our initial list. So we were each given five stickers to go through these 20 different ideas, if you will, or bullets, and then choose the ones that we thought were most important. And then from that, then we scaled down a little bit more. We decided in looking at all of it, which ones we thought would fit here, and what would be a sub, you know, topic for this particular topic. So there was a lot of conversation that went into it. At one point, actually, I suggested, what if we take out that particular word? And she said, we'll have to vote on it as a group. So then afterward, we came together, and we like, literally did a vote on it. So there was a lot of collaboration, a lot of communication that went into this, and we felt, I think, right, anyone who was on that committee, we felt really good about what the final recommendations were. These were the final five recommendations that we came up with as a group. I would, I could just talk about each one right now, but that's not my role. My role is to read those five to you. Okay. So one, we're going to create a special education handbook. Two, training to increase inclusive practices. Three, clarification and training on student-study team process. Four, to ensure correct placement of students in programs. And five, communication between all community partners. And now I will pass it on to McKenna. Thank you.
So the first recommendation that we talked about was to create a special education handbook. This would really be, you know, there's a lot of legal timelines, documents, and specific, you know, orders of pages, and percentages of times that we deal with when writing IEPs. You know, lots of things are individualized, so they can't be, you know, specifically put in a handbook, but those things that can would be helpful to have easy access to all of our special education staff, just so it's easy to find and consistent across the district. So we do right now have a website, but in talking on the committee, we found that not a lot of people were accessing the website, because it was difficult for them to find. So we did have it added to Clever, and as you can see on there, that's a screenshot of the Clever tiles. So the Student Support Service Department now has a Clever tile, so it's easy for special educators to click on that and find all of the resources that we already have on there. And then we are looking at working with those on the committee who volunteered to add additional resources that they feel would be helpful, and even helpful to general education teachers, just in kind of knowing some of the background of the legalities of special education tonight.
And why is a Clever tile important for teachers?
So that's where our teachers go to find everything. That's where we find like our pacing guides, our curriculum is on Clever. So, you know, going to a different website, teachers like everything in one place, so they can bookmark it, so they already all know Clever, I mean, all the kids know how to get to Clever. It's just something we use every single day. So now that it's on there, they will see it every day, and it will be, you know, not like, oh, I should remember to go to the separate website. It'll be right there, so they can click on it and find all of the resources that we already have, and then all of the ones that will be added as well, based on the committee meetings that we've had.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then, so during the committee meetings, we did review the FICMAT report and the recommendations that they gave. And one recommendation was to increase inclusive practices. As a committee, and agreed that this is something that we need to continue to do, and continue to do with the correct support. So when we refer to the inclusion program, that is only at Rosedale right now. So when that word inclusion is being used in regards to other sites, that's not quite correct in regards to the inclusion program. That's only at one site right now. So we discussed other districts in this area. Only one of them has a similar inclusion program, but it's really not similar, because they closed all of their mild mod SDC classes at once, and kind of shoved all the kids in gen ed. We did not feel that would be best for our students, first of all, and second of all, for our teachers. That doesn't give them the correct support. So we discussed that. We feel that the district really rolled out the inclusion program well, starting at Rosedale last year with just TKK in first grade, and moving it up this year. So just looking at continuing to expand that, again, with the right support. So at Rosedale, myself and one other special education teacher work with all of the general education teachers, planning, communication. We also have a team of paraeducators that helps support the students. And we talked about some of the academic data, and how we've seen great improvements in our students with special needs. Many of them are outperforming their general education students. I would say, on average, our inclusion students are in the middle of their class as far as academic performance. So they're outperforming at least half of their general education classroom. Specifically in regard to, I know CASP was mentioned earlier, our third-grade students, this was their first year in the general education setting, so they've been in SDC, most of them, since they were three years old. And they came into third grade this year at about a first grade or lower level on IREDDI, and they have increased to early third grade on the most recent diagnostic. So we just discussed, you know, this is really good data to show that access to the general education curriculum and being in a classroom with, you know, your peers who are learning at that general education pace and rate, has really helped our students with special needs. And again, having that right support in the classroom and collaboration with the teachers, you know, has helped with behavior of both gen ed and special ed students. At Rosedale, we're not seeing, you know, our inclusion students having extreme behaviors, and our paraeducators and myself and the other teacher are there to support a lot of our general education students when they have behavior. So it's just really nice to have kind of that team of everyone really working, like all means all, all students are all of our students. So we just want to have trainings to help teachers as we kind of roll this out to other sites, you know, kind of duplicate what we're doing at Rosedale and other places, even if it's not, you know, the inclusion program, but it's just, you know, resource students who, you know, may need some support and things like that. Just really training teachers so they feel prepared and empowered to have these students in their classroom, because from a student-centered focus, this is really what's best for students, and helping, you know, all around academics, socially, and friendships as well. So increasing inclusive practices and training teachers, so they feel that they are ready to do that.
Next slide, please.
Good evening. This is my second boardroom today. I was in training at Hard District all morning. Before the recommendation, I just want to share quickly an explanation of student-study team process. This is the process where you have a general education teacher or an administrator, and they're identifying a struggle or a need with a student, whether it's academics or... And so a team convenes, and they address these concerns and interventions that have been put in place so far. A lot of times in these meetings, phrases will be shared like, I just feel like the student can't read yet, we've tried this and this, the student isn't making progress in this area. There are a lot of things thrown around, which is great information, but at the same time, in that student-study team, we really need to look at the data. We need to make sure that we're leveraging all the data we have at hand, whether it's the diagnostic data, we have our learning cycle data that is going on at most, most of all the sites, and we have the other classroom data that's going on. And so with that data, we want to make sure to make a determination and give the tools to that team to make really informed decisions as far as what's working, what's been tried as far as interventions, has anything shown progress? Are there other interventions that we can put in place before we move forward and look at some other options with the student? And so what we're recommending with student-study team is really looking at providing a uniform student-study team process that really guides continuously trained team members, staff across the district, so that we're all sort of on the same page, using the same guidelines, the same flow charts, if you will, to make sure that we're addressing the needs of students in the same place. Because when we look at a student-study team, and if the interventions are working, how do we continue those? How do we demonstrate data? If those interventions aren't working, we look at other interventions, and if not, it might be something where we look at different placements and things like that. So if we go to the next slide, looking at how the students are placed. So if we have a student who does become identified with a learning disability of some sort, then we're looking at the appropriate placement. And every time we get to an IEP meeting, we're looking, especially an initial IEP meeting, we're looking at that really delicate balance of what's called least restrictive environment. And we want to make sure that the student, when they're receiving services, that we're not pulling them away from that direct instruction, or that core content they're getting from their general education teacher. So looking also at, looking at the recommendation of continuing student-study team, and providing the resources where we can receive training at the beginning of the school year, and then throughout the school year, so everybody is sort of on the same page as we move forward across the district, across the district. And then also looking at when we look specifically at providing services through an IEP, making sure that the student is in the appropriate least restrictive environment moving forward. Thank you.
And I'm going to ask one, which is communication. So we had those 20 sheets that they... So we had those 20 sheets that they showed back on one of the other slides. On those 20 sheets, about 16, 16 of them involved communicating, communicating between the different teams, between the paraeducators and the teachers and the gen ed teachers and the special education teachers. And it's falling by the wayside. So we've come up with ways where we can, you guys are graciously given a lot of some time where we can communicate with each other. We can come together and plan. We can tell each other what works with this child, what doesn't work with this child. If you give this child a chance to do this thing, you're going to have a much better day. And those little things help make a big difference inside the classroom. And we have to be able to communicate together. So we're going to use part of our Wednesdays. Hopefully we're going to use some more time now that we will be able to be at school with the teachers when the kids go home to help create plans and implement the plans together. And so that each person who comes in contact with our students can say what we see needs to be done or what we think might help and move forward. And the other thing is, we can also communicate with the teacher to communicate back to the parent. Because sometimes the teachers don't get to communicate with the parents and the parents are telling us and then we can tell the teachers. Communication was, was key.
So for next steps for the task force is that we are, we've asked people to sign up for the different groups to work on all of the ideas that we presented to you. We will be getting together the different committees to work on all of our projects kind of separately. I don't know if at some point we might bring everybody back together one more time after we've had a chance to work in our individual committees. So we'll have, we've already actually met as a committee to look at some of the recommendations by FICMAT regarding some of our preschool programs. And like McKenna said, we started already working on the, the handbook or the digital handbook. So we've started already, but we'll continue working with the committees. Everyone got to sign up for whichever committee they felt most passionate about. And that's, those are the next plans for us.
Thank you.
Basically, at the end of our, our coming together and our collaboration, we all had to come up with one word. And we're all hoping that we come out shining bright like rainbows. And we were all grateful and helpful and we felt valued and we felt heard. And most importantly, we were very encouraged that we think we've come up with some ideas that will help us move forward and work better with everyone, the parents, the students, the staff, teachers. But most importantly, we're happy to be better by our kids. Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll turn it over to the board if they have any questions.
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much. So glad to hear those words that we felt heard, we felt encouraged. So glad to hear that. Thank you all, as well as the rest of the, the committee members for taking this deep dive. First of all, I really appreciate how well, well represented each sector of our education partners was. So thank you for making sure that everybody had a voice on, on this team. If you've been watching our board meetings for any, any amount of time, you know, I'm a very firm believer in inclusion. I think it's often misunderstood. And so I think training and communication is absolutely essential. When it's done right, outcomes improve for our special education learners and our general education learners, and it's not close. When it's done right. So thank you all so much. I'm looking at the FICMAT recommendation on slide, I think it was number seven? Maybe six. Well, let me just read it. I copied it here. Identifying students for special education when they do not require it is not a best practice and increases special education costs. Increases in the percentage of students identified for special education in the district appear to be caused by its student study team process, multi-tiered systems of support and exit procedures for special education. Did the team look into why these things are happening? As they go through our prescribed process, why students are being over identified?
I can answer the exit procedures question or that specific point. So when we got that information from FICMAT as a department, we talked about that. And so we've already started to have conversations in our, with our staff about, you know, when you're at that initial IEP meeting with a parent, you really talk about, our goal is to provide these services for a short term and get you to where you, the student needs to be so that we can exit the student and go back into general education. So really setting up the IEP from the beginning, that this is something that we're going to give the student while they need it, with the hope of being able to exit and go back into general education if the student can be successful that way. So we've really talked about changing how we kind of approach from the very first day. We're educating our staff and our families on the purpose of the IEP. And that at some point, it may go away when the student achieves a, you know, grade level or they're reaching their goals. And that's really the, making that a celebration instead of, you know, it's hard, it's scary for parents to have, hear that that might be taken away. But if we try to explain from the beginning, that is the goal. So that's one way that we've targeted that part of the recommendation.
And that was also a recommendation made by parents on the committee. These were all parents who have students in special education and have experienced that process. And they said, going through the process, it, it would be helpful to know like, what's the end game? With, with all of this, what, I mean, we talk about IEP goals, but like, once you have speech, are you going to need speech forever? Or, you know, what are we looking at here? And, and so that way, when they're faced with a change in services or supports provided, they've, they've already been aware, it doesn't have that feeling of it's, we're taking it away.
My next question is going to smack of a, in my day. But forgive me. I started my career in, in a large school district and I went six years before I moved into a position of essentially a TOSA, which is the first time I ever saw a book. And it was a big, I don't remember what it's called, a big, thick, maroon colored book. And it was a, the biggest list of recommendations I've ever seen in my life that was remarkably prescriptive about when a child engages in these types of behaviors. Here are literally anywhere between 13 and 87 suggestions of what we can do as teachers before we even refer the child to the SST program. I see nods. Does anybody else remember what that book is called?
The, the book still exists.
It's still around.
Thank you. Thank you. Do our schools, do our teachers, do every one of the teachers on our campus have access to those and, and know where to find those? I'm sure they're, they're really expensive. And so I, I don't know that it would be feasible.
There are tools that, for behaviors that we're using with our behavior team. And so Angie's been working on that. I think it's something that we've given to the administrators.
So yes, but to go back on that thought in general, that one that we're talking about is specifically for behavior. They're made by Hawthorne. And the, the big red book that you're referring to with all those interventions.
Referral intervention manual.
Yes, absolutely. I, I didn't know it as the prim, but I, I know of the book. So maybe that was a little after you back in the day. I don't know, but right around that time. What I will say is, the exciting thing is transitioning to Panorama. They have a playbook inside of Panorama, which is a sort of a digitized prim that you're speaking of. And I'm going to call them out, but Mountain View, they are piloting that through the SST process and working with Ms. Noakowski for that. So when you have a student profile and you pull them up and you've had an SST meeting and you're trying to look at, you know, doesn't complete work on time, you can go to that playbook and type that in, and then there's different strategies that you can try, you can take data on that. And so then anybody who's working with that student can see that information. We had something similar with SST online, but that system, I'm just going to say, was a little clunky. And you had to give permission for different people year after year, which was difficult, right? New teachers had new permission with new students and you kind of had to rearrange those. So that's one of the exciting features of, about Panorama that we have, are, are working with right now.
Okay, thank you. So I'm hopeful that perhaps the handbook that y'all are developing will, will have some very clearly defined guidelines and markers to help staff better understand when a child needs more specific academic support, such as would come along in an IEP or maybe something else, right? Maybe it's the teacher that needs support, or maybe it's just guidelines here, try this, you know, more attempts, things like that. So hoping that'll come out. I think last, you mentioned that communication is the key difference in most instances. Agree with you 100%. Thank you for focusing so much on communication with parents. It looks like your recommendations naturally would, but I just want to make sure that as we continue to move forward and as a district, we continue to make progress. And, and you know, we have consistently called on district staff and our school site staff to, to become more innovative and stay on that cutting edge of high quality education. Want to make sure that as we onboard new staff, that these things are very clearly communicated to them as well. Oftentimes we engage in initiatives, training, we get everybody on board, but we forget about the person that's going to join us tomorrow.
We actually had a lot of discussion, I'm just going to jump in, maybe one of you guys were going to say that, that actually we had a lot of discussion about that. Because if you're not hired before, I don't know, August something, and you get all of that wonderful PD, voluntary PD, new teacher training PD, and then the other PD, what happens if you come like August 20th, right? Just a little bit after the time. And so we talked about having that, or you have a big initiative, we roll it out and we do all this training this year, but maybe not out next year. So the team, the council, when we were talking about that was, how do we incorporate that sustainability? So it's not just once at the beginning of the year or once every so often, but how do we make sure that becomes part of what we do systematically? So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you all. Looking forward to the results of your work as they continue to roll out. I know it's not going to be a fast process, but I know it's going to be a, a really effective process, not only in making sure that district finances are handled properly, but making sure that, as you said, every child in our district is getting exactly what they need so that they all can continue to excel. Thank you. I applaud you all.
Mr. Drunky?
Thank you guys so much for your participation on the committee and for a great report. I want to get back to one of the issues that, that Mr. Watson raised, which was exit strategies. And, and Darcy, I think you, you hit on it of at least where it's appropriate in the initial IEP meetings, having some, you know, ideas about what an end game would look like. One of the things that struck me in the FICMAT report was some of the comments that they made on the, the exiting of special ed students. Many district staff indicated that students are not being exited from special education according to the two-pronged test at their triennial IEP meetings if they no longer qualify for special, special education. And some staff indicated that they never exit a student from special education. Staff reported parent pressure for the student to remain in special education is the largest factor. In addition, many staff reported that part of the district's culture is to keep a student in special education if they are making educational progress because the program is viewed as effective. In, in terms of addressing that culture issue, and I assume this is going to be something that's part of the handbook, can you talk about some more specifics about the exiting process and, and strategies? And, and, you know, at least confirm that that's going to be part of the, the handbook?
So yes and no, I guess, as far as the handbook goes, because some of it's individualized, so it's a little difficult. But what we, what we did find out through the FICMAT study that was interesting, the same paragraph that you read, is that many of our staff were having a hard time with the two-prong that you referred to. So they're eligible for special education because they have autism or whatever it may be. But then there's the second prong, which is there's an impact to their access. And so some of our staff needed, they need still and needed a little more training in that area. So we've identified that and that's something that we're working on. We have quarterly, I think there are meetings with our each, we call them job alike. So we meet with RSP individually and SDC. So we're providing more of that training because that came out as something that they definitely needed. And then I think the other piece is our people, they do such a great job, right? That parents don't want to let them go. And so that's, and it's hard because if we say the student no longer qualifies and the parent doesn't agree, then we go down this legal pathway. So it's really, I think that piece is going to be parent education. And I do think it starts with like, again, that very first time that they show up at the IEP table and we basically tell them, I'm working myself out of a job, right? I want to work so you don't need me anymore. And we're just constantly giving that message to parents and, and then also helping them feel like, even when they don't have these people there, that they still have support. So I think it's, you know, there's some staff training piece and then there's the parent education piece.
And we did have, I'm just going to jump in, we, we had parents in our group, we had some really great discussions. But a parent was really sharing that they felt the, the fight or the struggle to get identified, to get services, to have all the services that they felt were appropriate, to see their child being successful, they didn't want to pull it away. And as they went through different grade levels and they, some of those supports were being pulled away and they saw the student was being very successful. They said, I, I think I need to take a step back. I mean, that, that parent, you know, right in front of all of us was very vulnerable in her own journey with her own child and, and just really shared, hey, I think, you know, more parents need to understand, like, it's okay, I'm on the other side. I've seen that. And how do I help? How do we get that message out to multiple parents to, to say, because, you know, she, she shared with us what she was thinking during that time. So when we talk about that, that parent piece and part of the hand, you know, there's, there's discussion about a parent handbook and, you know, the journey and what does that look like and what is the end goal? So I think it, it definitely is, when we talk about a two-pronged test, it's also two-pronged, our, our staff and then, you know, parents as well.
What do you think the timeline is on the handbook or handbooks?
Well, I think the handbook is always going to be in progress because, and that's why we made it digital. When I first started teaching, we were handed this big fat notebook and that was your handbook. And then I think by the time you got it to your classroom, it was partially outdated. So that's the purpose of the digital version, I guess. And so we'll always be updating it. It's already available with tools, but it, it's definitely a work in progress. So we are just going to be adding to it ongoing, but it's already available with some of the general tools that we use.
And then how much discussion was there about PBIS? Cause I know one of the recommendations was, you know, continue to work and provide training and support to schools of PBIS. Was that an important part of the discussion?
I, I think overall, the task force recognized there needed to be more training, the computer monitor, training in behavior. And one of the things that I gave them permission was to bounce that to the task force. The behavior council, the task force to bounce it to the behavior council because they knew there was sort of an overlap in that area. Because we also had so many great ideas that they, you know, to narrow. And so when we talked about training in general, they felt that that, you know, with students with behavior was something that the, the behavior council would address.
All right, that's it for me. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you for the presentation. I was so excited to hear handbook. I see additional considerations for parent handbook, which I think is going to be nominally helpful. I was thinking back to when my son was in elementary school. He didn't get an IEP, but he did get a 504 and I had no guidance. And I ended up talking to an educational advocate at $400 an hour before I finally got some guidance. And so when Ms. Barry said the word fight, when you fight for your kids, I, I would like it to not be a fight, you know? And I think that that's kind of what you're going toward, I hope. And then the other thing that I learned tonight, the, so the inclusion program at Rosedale versus including a child in general ed that's not part of a formal inclusion program. Can you kind of like expand on that a little bit? Explain like, like in another school where there's not a full-on inclusion program, what does that look like for that special ed child?
Can I? The IEP team can recommend that a student is placed in general education. And, and it's a student with, with an IEP with needs, right? And so sometimes we have students that are considered inclusion students because they are accessing goals in that classroom, but they're maybe not meet, being able to meet the, the standards that are being taught in the classroom. but they're maybe not being able to meet the the standards that are being taught in the classroom. And and when they're at specific sites, I do think it is a little more complicated. So typically, a student that's considered fully included in a general education classroom at a site that we don't have a program will usually have someone who's supporting them in the classroom, whether that's one of our environmental learning support paraeducators, or they're supported through the Resource Specialist Program. But I think that those people are lacking some of the training that our staff at Rosedale has has received since we started the inclusion program. So I would say the big difference, I think, is really the training piece for the staff. And so that's something that we want to, you know, expand as far as, you know, like, I think someone said, even training our resource specialists, because it's really different when you pull a kid into your classroom and you teach them in a small group as opposed to you're going into the classroom to help your five resource kids that are in that room in that setting rather than pulling them out. But I, it takes some really special skills and training to be able to do that. So that that's the piece that we want to start providing to our other special education staff.
I just want to clarify for maybe for the public or for the board and all of us. Every student in special ed, it it's not a place, it's a set of services. So we have special education students that are receiving services that are in a general education setting. They might be receiving speech services, OT services. They would be receiving RSP services. All of those students have IEPs, but they are in a general education setting. Because when you look at that two-pronged approach, that's where they can receive the best access to the core curriculum with their typical peers. Then we have some students that need a different approach. And so we have the SDC 1 and then the SDC 2. We have our RAP program. Some of those are specialized because of the student's actual disability. And they they now come back from that classroom into the general education class, as Mrs. Joseph shared, for an inclusive or mainstreamed process. Then you have the inclusion program, because I think we're throwing all these words around that we know to be different, but maybe everybody doesn't realize that they're different. The inclusion program is something where kids who would normally be in a self-contained special education classroom are now in a general education classroom with the special education staff coming in and supporting them. That's not for every student. It's for some students, just like a basis program or a RAP program isn't for every student. They're for students who who have those those needs. So I think when we when we talk about inclusion, we start using that word over and over and over again for all these different things. And I think we have to remember, special ed is not a place or a room, it's a set of services to meet a child's needs. They're all general education students first. And then we start providing their needs as they move through sort of a tiered system for where they need more supports. But I just, I know people think when we say inclusion, then they think, oh, that's one thing, and then it's another thing. All special ed kids are included in general ed classes in some way.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
And nothing for me. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all the work. It sounds like you guys have done quite a bit of work to get to the point that you're at now. So thank you so much.
Can I take a minute? I want to thank all of you for coming in tonight and presenting. It's not easy to stand up here at the dais and or at the podium and present and take questions and answer those questions. I know you guys worked together with Darcy and Michelle to do this. And we sometimes take on those challenges all the time. But I know it's different for some of you, and I just really want to thank you for doing that. I also want to thank Samantha and Amanda. They've already left. But I know they too volunteered to come up and and do that. And I think it adds a richness to the presentations to hear it directly from you. And I just want to thank you personally for for taking that risk and being part of those groups. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the SEL survey results mid-year.
We are going to present our screener results. We've taken two assessments so far this year. And Ms. Noakowski has really had the oversight and the leadership with this. So I am going to let her share with her expertise about this. And without further ado, next slide, please.
Thank you. Sorry, y'all just get me now. So.
I forgot to introduce you, so.
I can, I'll do it. Hi, I'm Tanya Noakowski. I'm the one of the Student Support Services coordinators, and I work primarily with the mental health team, including our school social workers, partner with Ed Services for our family and community liaisons, and also am supporting kind of wellness and social emotional learning. So as Ms. Barris said, we have launched a new universal social emotional learning screener. And while I say it's new, it's not new in its development, but it is new to us with the Tier 1, which is our universal support, so all students have access. What we really have focused on is trying to get proactive and preventative around identifying students that maybe need some support or guidance in developing their social emotional skills. And so the rationale and the the goals for this screener is really to have early identification of students who either their teacher is reporting that their skills are a little bit lacking. But also it allows for that early intervention so that we can try to support that student early before maybe it it results in in special education down the road. So this is one of those universal things that we really focus on to try to get upstream, which is really important. As we see in our annual connectedness survey, which we'll do again this spring, student perception and experience frequently differs from adults, whether it's the teacher or the staff reporting or their their caregiver or family member. And so research shows that engaging student voice really helps students practice those self and social awareness skills as well as problem solve and learn those self advocacy skills. And so for this screener, which is new for us, we did solicit input from students in grades three through six, which we will kind of dive into on the next slide, please. So because we use the screener from Panorama, Panorama is a technology platform that brings data in from various places. So it comes, it brings information in from Infinite Campus. So it has teachers and classrooms. It has student demographic information. It has whether they are identified as a special education student or a student with a 504 plan. And that also brings in their academic data, so iReady diagnostic, report cards. Our behavior data shows up in there also flowing from Infinite Campus. And then this social emotional screener. So because we use what Panorama has, it is nationally normed across all of their school districts that they work with. You'll see that the areas that we rated, the teacher perception has 10 questions, and those are the same static 10 questions. And they specifically look at the areas of like grit, self-management, learning strategies, self-advocacy, and the teacher rates the student on the teacher's perception of the student's skills. Teachers from all grades, TK through sixth grade, rate their entire classroom and answer those 10 questions. For the student self-rating, those are live links. So if you go into the presentation, you'll be able to see the actual questions that were asked. We we aligned the student questions with the lowest rated areas from our connectedness survey last year. So you might remember that some of our lower areas were around students behave so my teacher can teach, or that I feel like an important part of my school. And I think there was another one, like kids are kind to each other. And so we focused on these three areas that really matched up with our lowest connectedness areas to see if we could solicit more student voice. And those areas were focused for the kids around growth mindset, social awareness, and emotion regulation. That totaled 23 questions for the students in those three areas. And all of the students in those grades were given the opportunity to rate that during their regular social emotional learning time in their classroom of the teacher's choice. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all this because it's a lot of really small words, but it is definitions of each of the areas that we rated. So I wanted to include it as a reference point. Next slide, please. When we look at our survey process, you all might remember that we implemented Panorama in the late fall. So with the transition and setup for us to get all of our data systems talking to Panorama, we weren't able to launch until September. At that time, we provided training to teachers on the platform. And we also provided some office hours. So if people needed technical assistance or some maneuvering through, that was made available to them as well. And our first rating period in the fall occurred from October to November. We did like a two-week period so that teachers and students could rate themselves. We then had our second rating period in the winter, which was January, February. And we have not only the results from that screening, but also the comparative data between the two. We will rate again for a third cycle towards the end of the year in May so that we can really look at what our growth may or may not be. And or by then, we will also have our connectedness survey data results from April slash May so that, again, we can line up those areas of focus that we really want to get gain student voice on and plan for next year. Next slide, please. So the following slides are a snapshot of our fall data results. And so this was our initial screening. To note, you'll see for emotion regulation, so we we provided both the students' ratings of themselves in grades three to six and also the teacher perception rating. You'll see there's those two bars in the middle, which gives you the percentage that responded favorably, meaning there's strength in those areas. And then the third column area that you'll see is really that compared to others nationally. So to note, Panorama only norms the student areas. So you'll see that there's not that national norming for the teacher perception. But we, it does allow us to compare ourselves and our students against the kind of national results. So as as I mentioned earlier, we we frequently see that students' perception is markedly different from the adults who are reading them. And that is demonstrated here with students reading their own emotion regulation. Again, this is our older students, grades three to six, who only responded 48% favorably. And so more than 50% of students are essentially identifying that they don't feel like they have really strong emotion regulation skills for themselves. And so that's something that we want to dig into. Conversely, teachers rated students that 80% favorably. So again, like if we think about that pyramid, all things go to the pyramid, right? 20% of students are intended or research would suggest that they need a little bit additional support. And so the teacher's rating kind of falls in line with what that pyramid would generally look like nationally. Next slide, please. You can see, and again, because we only rated the students in those three areas, there won't be comparison bars for every area. But I felt like from a transparency standpoint, it was important for us to have the information accessible for everybody. In looking at self-management, this was an area where, again, students rated themselves differently. However, they rated themselves higher than teachers. So you'll see almost, you know, a 15% difference between how students rate themselves. They're like, yeah, we're like a C average on our self-management. Teachers are like, hmm, a little less. But when you look at our students' responses, they fall in that 60 to 79th percentile nationally. So we're still above kind of the the mid-range norm when you look at social awareness. And again, this is one of those questions that tied to our connectedness survey data. Students rated themselves 10% lower than teachers. So students, and again, nationally, we were below the 50th percentile mark for our students' rating as far as how equipped they felt to be socially aware and to engage with others. Next slide, please. And then these last three areas, again, are teacher ratings. And so you'll see 71% where teachers rate students' effort, their level of engagement in class, and then also grit, which is really kind of that ability to stick with something when it's hard, is lower at 65%. Next slide, please. Oh, yep, I thought I, okay, sorry. Growth mindset is our lowest area in the fall. So you'll see the students rated themselves very low. This was our lowest rated answer at 31%. And nationally, comparatively, we're in the 0 to 19th percentile. So our students are really feeling like they can't improve, they can't get better. And so some of those questions were how much can you increase your effort? How much can you increase how smart you are? How much can you improve your behavior in school? And when you make a mistake, how often do you ask your teacher for ways to do better? And so students, I think, and and we'll get into this a little bit in next steps, is is really how do we focus on giving students the confidence and the skills to be able to ask those questions, but also to, and maybe this is related to the grit rating for teachers, around like, I can do hard things and I can stick through it instead of like, maybe like the TikTok scroll. So again, these are like assumptions and questions that we need to dive more deeply into. But also just wanted to kind of reflect the teachers' ratings on learning strategies and self-efficacy were both at 64%. So not great, but not our lowest rating. Next slide, please. Finally, when we look at the social perspective taking, right? We talk about empathy, we talk about being kind to others. Teachers rated students as having a 59% favorable ability to do that. And we see that and we hear that even on the playground, right? Where most of our kind of behaviors occur. One of the things that I do want to highlight is I I also noted the response rates, not only for our teachers rating students, but also for our student responses. And so we had a 90, almost 95% response rate for our teachers completing the ratings. And students were at about 87%. So the national kind of like best practice is if you're an 85% or above, you have really strong response rates. So we've exceeded both of those, which we feel pretty good about, especially because it was our first rating using this new tool. And so people were getting familiar with it. Next slide, please. I'm going to go a little bit faster through the winter ones because they're the same questions. But you'll see for the winter data results, since it's our second rating period, there's another column where it indicates if the rating increased, decreased, or stayed the same between the two rating periods. So you'll see we have the same topics because we're we're keeping those questions static for students for the entire year because we are doing some focused interventions and supports in the areas that we've been rated lower in to try to build up those skills. So we want to make sure we're progress monitoring ourselves based on those interventions. So you'll see emotion regulation for students and teachers both increased by 1% between fall and winter. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Self-management. You'll see that the students' greatest increase was in this area of self-management. They jumped up two percentage points. Still that discrepancy between students and adults. However, those are trending in the right direction. When we look at social awareness, students felt like they were static. They didn't have a lot of growth in that area, whereas teachers rated that students increased by two percentage points. Next slide, please. Classroom effort, engagement, and grit, all increased. Classroom effort, engagement, and grit, all increased. So again, I think some of that is getting into the routine. We're deeper into the school year. We've got our routines and procedures. We know what's expected of us. So that looks a little bit different. And we've also had social emotional learning embedded in the classroom for a good number of months. Next slide, please. When we look at growth mindset, we went down one. And so it felt like we didn't have a lot to give in that area, yet we went down. So again, talking with students and understanding that piece. When we look at learning strategies and self-efficacy as rated by teachers, both of those increased. And then, next slide, please, the social perspective taking. Teachers, this was teachers' greatest growth recognition for students was that it was a 3% increase. When we look at our response rates, again, we well exceeded the 85% response rate. We were at 97.6 for the teachers and 91.7 for students. So really strong responses, creating that time and making sure that we have the capacity to get those done. Our insights from the students' ratings, we really need to hone in on this growth mindset. It is really key, and it was a big thing before COVID. And so we maybe need to get back to some of those basics. And really also, students feeling like they don't have necessarily the skills or the opportunities to practice some of that social awareness. So those are areas that we'll be diving into for the rest of the school year. Next slide, please. When we look at the insights from the teachers' ratings, again, they've, teachers from the fall to the winter, all of the areas that teachers have rated have increased. And then, next slide, please. Their lowest area continues to be identifying self-management and some social perspective taking for students. And so how can we work on really helping students create those opportunities, but also build those skills? When we think about our curiosities and like, what are our questions? Again, wanting to understand the growth mindset piece and how might teachers use this data to intentionally focus their social emotional learning time, but also creating those opportunities in the classroom? So if I'm having trouble with social perspective taking, what does that look like? If we're collaborating and doing group work, how might I build in some of those opportunities in work that's naturally already happening as part of the lesson? Also looking at, is there a correlation or connection between students with big behaviors and the lower social emotional competencies? Panorama gives us the option to do that and to look at those data points collectively. And then one of the things that we continue to struggle with, again, as I mentioned before, the research talks about student voice and engagement and really empowering students. How do we solicit voice from our youngest learners? Yes, TK through second grade, they are younger, and so a screener like this is not as meaningful. However, they still all have experiences that are meaningful. And so how do we dive in and try to solicit some of their voice as well? Next slide, please. For our next steps, site administrators are presenting site-wide data to teachers at a staff meeting. We are equipping teachers with tools to review their classroom data. And in those classes, grades three through six, how do they present that data back to their classroom and engage in a community conversation or a community circle to say like, what does this mean for you all? And how can we do this better in our class? Again, engaging that student voice and agency so that they own part of the process. It's not all on the teacher to make it happen, but hearing from students, what does this mean for you? One site has said like, we're creating a growth mindset week. So they have a team of people who are really kind of mobilizing around that. And then we have school social workers who are working with teachers based on the data from the screener to create lessons or groups for identified site needs. And then, of course, some of this will also be shared with families and parents. We have conferences coming up. This data shows up in those citizenship and work habits areas, but also as part of that conference conversation, parents and teachers will be able to talk about specifics for each student. So it's a little bit more individualized. Next, questions?
Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. Social emotional skills are often referred to as soft skills, but they can be really hard to teach. However, indicators have shown for decades now that oftentimes they're much more crucial in life success than even academic skills. So really appreciate our, taking our time to look into how our students are doing and how we can improve. Appreciate the focus on our areas of highest need based on the connectedness survey. I noticed the survey questions did a great job of kind of cutting through the jargon, right? Not just growth mindset, but these specific skills so that our kids can understand what specifically, and our staff as well, right? What specifically we're going after in these surveys. But I think it's also important to take the parts up to the whole. I notice as I visit our different campuses, it's very clear in just about every classroom that we are working with our students on the idea of growth mindset. I haven't seen it as much, and so I wanted to ask, are we sure that they're fully understanding the concepts of social awareness and emotion regulation as well?
Maybe. And I say that, right? Because I think that's where the conversation becomes so meaningful with the students. So the student, right? Like, I might know how I rated myself, but I don't know how my friend or my classmates rated themselves. And I think that's where the importance of that community circle or that community conversation within the class helps because we can start to then say like, oh, well, that's not what social awareness means for me. For me, you know, it's not about like what your face might be saying, but instead it's like, oh, there was a person that just walked out over there. So getting that shared understanding and conversation of what does that mean for the kids in the room? And then soliciting their input about like, how could we make that look different? You know, oh, maybe I don't have to raise my hand to go to the restroom. Maybe instead I just turn my card, whatever that looks like, you know? So problem solving with the students, which again, helps them with those communication skills and those problem-solving skills, but also those relationship skills. So it's kind of like a multi-pronged approach. But I think the importance is having the conversation with the students who rated themselves and understanding what it means for them. Because as we see, like, as the adults, like, we think we have the information, but our information looks very different than the students' information. And so understanding what is that difference and what is meaningful for them, it doesn't mean we're going to do all the things, right? Especially if it's something a little off the wall. But we certainly want to understand what is meaningful for them and what might equip them to feel more confident in that area.
And I think what you're asking, we did something similar with the connectedness survey in the past. So I believe it was a question around the kids feeling important or noticed at school or important at school. And they were like, well, their interpretation of important was that they had to have like a title, like be an adult or something like that. Right? But that's not what we intended. And so we had to help define that for them. So I think there's always going to be those kinds of conversations, and that's why the data is important is that's how you use it.
Yeah. And that reflection after the fact is usually the most powerful and, well, the most powerful learning in the process. So going back to that notion that the soft skills are hard to teach, is our SEL curriculum or our training addressing teaching these skills discreetly, right? Like, in my credential program, I was never taught how to teach grit. I was taught how to teach math.
So some of this predates me, so I'm going to tell you what I know from my understanding is that Harmony, which is our social emotional learning curriculum at this time, was adopted during COVID and was rolled out. There are lessons, there are like slide decks, all the things are present. But what I don't know, and what I would imagine there are gaps in, even just in the number of teachers we've had join us over the years, is that I don't know how robust that training push out was. I know when we have optional training days, Ms. Ford actually had been holding some Harmony trainings for teachers who wanted to participate. And again, it was optional. So if people didn't opt in, they may not have had exposure in the way that was intended. So Harmony itself and the lessons that Ms. Ford created do explicitly teach those things. However, I don't know that it is the best match, nor that it has been trained as robustly as it could be.
Which is why we're looking at a new curriculum.
Okay. Yeah, many of us aren't as comfortable as we are with fractions, you know, as we are with grit. I know that our teachers and staff regularly really drill down on our academic data, and the results are bearing it out. We saw earlier this evening. What kind of drill down and maybe PLC work is being done around our social emotional learning data and where we can improve our individual practice?
So it is something that will be woven into the PLC process because we have this data differently than we've ever had access to it before. And it allows us to cross-reference academic attendance and behavior data as well. It allows for all of the, like, kind of the whole child picture, excuse me, to really be looked at differently than we've been able to up to this point. But after the admin present the data at a staff meeting, teachers will be given instructions about how they can run the data for their entire class and then start to do almost differentiated instruction as needed for students who maybe like are really struggling in this area. So maybe we do like some small group instruction in this area of social emotional learning. So those things are beginning to happen. And I think, again, equipping teachers with those tools is going to be really important.
We continue to hear how all means all, referring to all of our students. And I'm hoping that we can also get to understand that all also means all of the child, the whole child, like you said. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Drunky?
I just had one question. You had talked about the connectedness survey informing how you approached this survey. Do you then see using the data that you got from this and doing anything differently with the connectedness survey?
That's a good question, and I'll defer to my friends and ed services. I don't know that will change the classes, the questions, because it's a three-year LCAP. But Mr. Clement?
Yeah, I mean, the questions for the LCAP will stay consistent for the three years. Some of the different things that we're looking at, for example, last week, the leadership teams came down from each school and we met together, really just to take a look at those questions and identify problem areas, maybe, like Dr. Hawkins shared with the meaning or confusion. I use the example, do you like school? I don't like getting up in the morning. I don't like really going. But do you love your school? I do love my school. Right? There's a difference there if you ask the question or if the kids think about it in a different way. So it's really, do they fully understand what we're asking them? And what can we do to remind ourselves of some of those questions? Are we talking to the students about their opinions? Or do they feel like they have a voice in our classrooms? And by us reviewing those questions as adults, it puts that reminder to work on that as a system. So that's just an example of one thing that we're doing in process with them.
The other thing is, is both those assessments are for different purposes. So one's a survey that we use for the LCAP for connectedness to school, and the other one is their social learning skills. So we tried to connect it to help us answer some of those questions, but they're for two different purposes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Cooper?
What a different world we live in. When I was in elementary school, nobody cared what I thought as long as I did the homework, right? Again, with the whole child, so I think at some point we do need to like actually define it the way we as the district see it. On the teacher percentages, does adding, the teachers are doing it for TK through two also, right?
That's correct.
Do those numbers include the TK through two?
They do.
Okay, so if there's a difference between the students and the teachers, it's not accounting for the TK through two?
That's correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure I'm answering the right question. So the teachers is representative of their rating TK through six.
Right.
Students are just three through six. So some of the lower or the higher may be representative because their sample size and their responses are greater, if that makes sense?
So could we pull out the three through six teacher surveys to compare to the three through six student surveys? Okay, because, and then, so like, on the emotional regulation where there's this big huge difference, are the teachers able to see side by side the student and there so they can kind of see where the disconnect is?
They can.
Cool. I think that was it. Oh, the growth mindset? Sorry. That one, I know you're addressing it, and I appreciate that because that one's kind of, I don't know what the word is, worrisome, I guess? Because that's a mindset that we would like the kids to have. So, thank you.
Yeah, no questions. I'm just more interested in how this ties back to the behavioral committee meetings and the discussions of PBIS and all that, and how this ties into that. So no questions.
Yeah, and I kind of shared the same thoughts or questions that Mr. Watson provided. So, you know, it seems to me that, you know, teachers are trained to teach math, English, science. So how do you get somebody to, like, how do you teach them to teach SEL? So I think that's really important to understand that. And then what the expectation is, right? Because again, they're not trained to do that specifically. So how much support we provide there? And then also just, you know, even the topics, right? So, and I'm sure there's, the questions are formulated in a way that it makes it easy for kids to understand. But like, as an adult, I know what growth mindset means, right? But I guarantee you, there's people, you know, who don't understand what that means. So just making sure that the questions are actually suitable for kids or that it's understandable for them, not above their head and they're like, oh, sure, that sounds good, you know? Or the other thing I was looking at too is, you know, there's 23 questions. So I don't know at what point do kids just start marking whatever because they're, they just want to be done with it? So maybe taking that into consideration. I know it's not just a survey that we participate, you know, that we do. It's something that's used, you know, across the board or whatever. But I don't know, I just think that's something to think about because I don't know how, how do we actually get a real, you know, a real sample from our kids?
Yeah, yeah. So we, there were other options where we could have chosen, and I think the student survey could go up to like 52 questions. And so we've worked with Panorama. I know. No, we were like, no, thank you. And so we...
As an adult, that would be hard. I give up after 10, man.
Yeah, so we worked with Panorama to say like, what is within the ballpark, you know? And Panorama does have some districts that rate, allow students to rate themselves even lower than third grade, but because that's where we had like really focused our connectedness survey, like, we just went with, this is data that we're already kind of, you know, looking at, and so let's start there. So, and, you know, it will be one of the conversations that we have with students and growth mindset, like, the student doesn't get the like growth mindset category, but those questions that I kind of ran through, like, do you think you can improve how smart you are? Like, that is how the questions are worded. So they don't necessarily know that they're rating their growth mindset. However, that is how it is organized under Panorama.
Yeah, I think the other thing too, just you made me think of something, is, you know, do the kids understand what this is for, right? So why are we doing this? What does it help, why, how does this help me? Or how does it, you know, how does it apply to what I do in class? So I think having a, you know, just a simple way to explain that to kids is important, right? Otherwise, it's like, again, we'll check A, check B, whatever, right? So I think that's super important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Okay, we're going to move on to human resources. We have ratification of memorandum of understanding between Sogus Teacher Association and the Sogus Union School District pertaining to dual-language immersion signing bonus. Can I have a motion in a second?
移到
I'll second. Thank you. And Dr. Stevenson?
All right, so we had a few questions about DLI earlier, but we are looking at hiring an additional four teachers next year. It is very difficult to find teachers that have a BCLAD, that have their bilingual credential to teach in those programs. So we are implementing a signing bonus similar to what we have for our speech and language pathologists. It's a $3,000 signing bonus that they get. We've asked them to stay for three years if they get that signing bonus. And then we are giving it to them retro, the current teachers, retroactive also. Keep them around.
Can you have, anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so it's given if they stay for three years. So is that 3,000 given upfront and then like if they leave early?
It's divided, it's divided out over the first three paychecks. If they leave early, then they repay it to us on a, on a prorated basis.
Any other questions?
I had a question. How did, correct me if I'm wrong, we hired teachers from Spain?
We have, yes.
And is there, is there a reason why you don't, we're not going that route?
We will, we are again also, yes.
You are? So this is in addition? So the, okay. Is there success with that?
Yeah, we hired four teachers this year from that program. Yeah, we hired four teachers this year from that program, and we're entering into another contract with, with California Department of Education so that we can do it again this year.
Okay. Thanks. Great, and I appreciate the, with the, with the signing bonus that you're actually retroactively giving to teachers that are doing the work, so thank you for that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The post? Okay, motion passes. Moving on, approved memorandum of understanding between California School Employees Association, chapter number 112, and the Sogus Union School District pertaining to campus supervisor hours of employment. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Stevenson?
All right, so this is continuing the increase of our campus supervisor hours from three and a half hours to five hours so that they can provide PE instruction and planning time for teachers.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? No? Motion passes. Moving on, adopt and approve resolution 24, sorry, 2024-25, number 50, concerning the reduction and/or laying off classified positions for lack of work or lack of funds. Motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Stevenson?
All right, so there's 41 positions, not people, but positions, that we are, we are looking at laying off. 31 of those positions are the general education paraeducators that work in our writing program. They were the intervention paras prior, they've been working in the writing program this year. There currently are only 21 of those left that are actual employees, so 10 of those positions are vacant currently. There's 21 employees, one is actually has, will be resigning at the end of the year, so that's a remaining 20 employees. And we will, they will be laid off from the general education writing position, but our plan is to place them into other open positions. So none of those 20 people will be losing a job. They're aware, because funding is ending, we've expended that learning recovery block grant money, so they've known that this was their final year in this position and that we are planning to place them back into other open positions. Like, we'll need more TK paraeducators and hopefully some kindergarten paraeducators. And then there are 10 other positions that are just general education paraeducator positions. Those are site-funded with site funds. All of those positions are currently vacant and do not need to be filled, so we're just laying off basically vacant positions.
Do you have any questions? Mrs. Greece, would you call the rule?
Sure. Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Drunky?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garvey?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to business services, approval of second interim 2024-25. Can I get a motion in a second?
I was just gonna say, before we get into the budget stuff, can we take a two-minute break?
Sure.
Ready, Nick?
We're ready.
Ready? Okay. All right, moving on to business services, approved second interim 2024-25. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Hindland?
Oh, okay, well, tonight is the presentation of our second interim, and it is March, and so in March we present this report, and it represents everything as of January 31st. And so what we typically do, we're doing tonight, we're just talking about the differences since the last time we talked about the budget. And for us, we have a increase in LCFF revenue that's related to our unduplicated percentage increasing, about a percentage. We have an increase in our other local revenue, which is related to the lottery, has a few prior year adjustments they, they have posted since we, we last talked at first interim. And then we have a, a large adjustment that represents increased interest revenue in our other local resource. Moving on to our expenditures on the unrestricted side of the budget, we have a increase in certificated salaries related to an additional teacher that was hired, as well as some additional substitute and extra duty. We have a decrease in certificated salaries, that's related to unfilled positions, but also we have started charging a portion of the office assistant salaries to the expanded learning opportunity program, so that moves those salaries to the restricted side of the budget. We have an increase to benefits that's related to retiree benefits being higher than usual since we've gone through the open enrollment period since, since first interim, as well as health and welfare benefits for employees being higher as, as well. With regard to services and other operating expenses, that's gone up by quite a bit. A big portion of that are, we have a, a nurse and also a psychologist that are being staffed by an agency, and also there's an increase in legal settlements. The line item six for capital outlay has gone up quite a bit as well. That's related to those buses that the board approved a few months ago, so that will go down next year. When we look at the fund balance for the restricted side, that really just lets us know the summation of all the changes between the revenues and the expenses. And then the next slide shows us our restricted revenue. So of importance there is some changes, whoops, related to additional Title I funds, which, which is always great. The other item is a grant that Ms. Quinn got related to special ed program, the inclusion grant, so that hopefully is an ongoing, going grant. We also got less funding at this point for our early education state preschool grant, and then that, that huge increase down below is related to what's called a Cal-shaped grant related to HVAC that will allow us to do a little bit more work on our HVAC systems district-wide. For the restricted expenditures, you, this is a good example of really looking at what happens when you have staff that you cannot fill internally, you have to hire agency folks. You see the decrease in our salary and benefits, and then the larger increases in our services and other operating expenses. How those look is, or when, when we compare them with first interim, we see that we most likely will end the year with a little more cash for the restricted side of our, our budget than originally planned at first, first interim. When you combine them all together, that's really the important screen, it lets you kind of calculate our reserve. So at first interim, we thought our reserve was going to be about 13.21%. It's most likely going to be less. We have our figure there at 12.59%. When we look at our other funds, these are all the other funds that we manage, the one that's highlighted is the one that also counts towards our reserve, and then as we keep depleting our restricted dollars from those one-time state grants, it will also be important to pay attention to the column that says fund with the ability to borrow, right? So those funds will allow us to borrow cash in order to maintain our solvency when we don't have enough cash in the general fund. Multi-year projections, there is a lot of writing on all of these slides, and again, multi-year projections for us are, there's a lot of data in here. These are only the things that are different. So we've kind of talked about everything in the, the pink bars, but when we look into the future, kind of shows you how fluid things are just in a few months. So we know now that the COLA is not going to be nine or two, I'm sorry, 2.93 like we thought at first interim for next year, it's going down to 2.94. And then really, the impact of that is a decrease in revenue, which you can see at the very last line, going from 107.8 million to 107.3 million. And then in the out year, the COLA-
Mr. Hindland, can you, can you say those numbers again?
Yeah. Did I say something wrong?
You, you said it went from, it went down from 2.93 to 2.94, and I just want to make sure that's what you meant.
It went from 2.93 down to 2.43.
Ah, there she is. I was confused.
It is 10 o'clock. And then if we look at 2026, 27, the projected COLA increasing in that year from 3.08 to 3.52%, but we will see most likely a small decrease in revenue. When we look at federal programs into the future, we are projecting that we'll continue to receive that increased Title I money. We also are projecting to keep receiving that special education federal capacity grant, and then we're also expecting that our Title II teacher quality dollars will stay a little bit higher than, than we had originally projected. Looking at other state income, just very slight variations in lottery funding when we look into the future, but again, we received less money from the special education early intervention preschool grant program than we expected back in October. And then looking at other local income, a big shift here is a lot of these are one-time programs, and we don't estimate that we will receive any one-time money into the future unless we actually receive it. Looking at staffing, every year, typically in December, we look at our estimated staffing increase, right? So this is just on the natural when people advance into different steps. So for our district, we are seeing a very slight decrease for certificated staffing, going from a natural 1.67% decrease down to 1.65, and then we respect that percentage in future years until we get to next December and run that calculation again. Also, at second interim, it's the first time we've broken out the amount of TK teachers from the other general education teachers, just so that it's kind of clear. So we are projecting having 14 additional TK classrooms next year, which also includes 14 additional paras. The other increases here are, you know, we've added another RSP teacher and another SLP, speech language pathologist, and we keep those increases into the future unless, hopefully, the special ed task force and all these other committees will get our, get our special ed numbers down. When we look at classified staffing, that historical increase dropped from 2.32 down to 1.95. What does that tell us? It tells us that a lot of our employees are already at the furthest step in their position, and so many of them aren't going to get an increase as the years go on. We've added 12 special education paraeducator positions since the end of October, so that is a substantial increase, and, and another, another nurse. When we look at employee benefits, again, we're kind of respecting that increase we saw between first and second interim into the future. When we look at books and supplies, the CPI, which protects our purchasing power into the future, went up from 2.86 to 2.92, so that increase is also in our budgets in the budget years. We also put that percentage into all of our services and other expenses. They're on here. You can see we think our utilities have gone down a little bit, which is a great sign, so we're watching those closely because of all the additional solar, so we're seeing a benefit there. And here, capital outlay, a lot of this is related to the bus purchases, also white fleet purchases to keep us current, and then any, any additional projects that are going on a bouquet are funded out of a general fund dollars. So when we put all of it together and look at everything in combination, you see our revenue is pretty stagnant when we look at it going from this year to next year, just an increase of about $400,000. And that's, of course, considering the COLA of, of 2.43%. Then when we look in the 2026, 27 year, the revenue is going up by several million dollars, but that mostly is all attributed to the COLA increase. Expenditures also going up on the natural with our staffing and also CPI increases. So our fund balance estimations. And of special note is this 3B, our restricted balance. You see those dollars, those one-time dollars that we have and we are slowly spending them, those are starting to decrease, which will also put pressure on our, on our cash. Total reserves estimated this year, I had mentioned 12.59, looking into the future, 13.18, and then in 26, 27, 14.33. So the reserve percentage, and this is a, a change, I, I don't talk about the reserve percentage or, or the reasoning behind it every single year, but I thought it was timely because of this article that came out from School Services last week. So they list every year the average ending fund balance for districts, and last year, elementary districts were 25.54, so that's the average reserve for elementary districts in all of California. Previously, the best practice from GFOA was that districts or any government agency should have at least two months, two months of expenses- two months of expenses as, as their reserve percentage. So that equates to a 16.67%. But then in 2023, they released this handbook saying, maybe we should rethink why we have a specific percentage and maybe it needs to be more fluid based on the organization. And so their recommendation was really make it about risk, right? So what, what is the risk to your organization? And ours is pretty basic, right? So our, our risk is not having enough cash to pay our employees or our bills. So a simple, simple illustration of that is this is our actual cash flow from this past year. And so we started the year with $41.8 million in the bank. So again, a large portion of that are restricted dollars, but we can still use those dollars to, to pay our bills. And you see, if we said, okay, well, what if we just started with no money in the bank? That's what the next slide shows. It says, okay, we start with no money. Then once we get to November, that becomes the month that has the largest negative. So in order for us to cover that negative and that $22.6 million negative in November, I would need to have that as my beginning cash balance. So based on our, our numbers this year, that really loosely is a 15.76% reserve. So again, you got to have enough to cover that expense. And we have options, right? So we hope most of it will just be there in, in the general fund. And then we, we would have to pull the additional out of the other funds that allow us to borrow. With that, it won't say anything.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify on slide 24. Our expenditures this year and in the out years is greater than our revenue. So we're deficit spending and we're projecting deficit spending. And this is with the COLA where it's currently projected.
I apologize, I did not click on the button to print slide numbers.
Oh.
He's, he's trying to figure out which
Second interim, NYPD expenditures.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay.
So we're deficit spending this year, we're projected.
That's, that's combined. So when I look at this slide and I see the negative $4.5 million, that may initially cause harm. But in order to really look at that, it needs to be separated between unrestricted dollars and restricted dollars.
Okay.
Because sometimes, like for us right now, when the state preloaded us with those grants, it's okay to deficit spend those dollars. So you have to focus on the unrestricted portion of the budget to know if that number is, is an issue. So if we're just looking at 24, 25, or this is also separated in this, this actual Saks report that's part of the budget item, it would tell us really if there is a cause for concern.
Okay. Given that these numbers are based on projected COLAs, should those be reduced? Certainly something we've got to keep our eye on, yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it, nothing further.
Mr. Trunkey?
No questions, just one comment. Congratulations, Nick, you did it without losing any.
I know.
Ms. Cooper? Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to approved CRS school equipment company, SAGA's contract number 2122178, amendment number 28, or sorry, 23, school furnishings, office furnishings, and accessories for the furniture project at West Creek Academy. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hindland?
We separate our furniture purchases in at least two orders. One is general education classrooms and the other is other service provider rooms. This is the order for the other service provider rooms, which will be here this summer.
Do we have any questions? No, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion passes. Okay, our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 18th here in the boardroom. Can I get a motion in a second to move to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you for eyeing in advance. 10:12.